Okay. The work session for January fifteenth, twenty nineteen is called to order. First order of business, do we have any student comment?
We do not.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to move right into the agenda items. And the first item is a discussion of two proposed resolutions from the Portland Association of Teachers. One regarding Black Lives Matter Week of Action and the other support for increasing Oregon public school funding. So I'm asking Suzanne Cohen and Elizabeth Teal of PAT to come up.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for this time on your agenda. The first resolution is regarding a week of action for Black Lives Matter. And so, a little bit of the context or the history of this, two years ago, our National Association, the NEA, called for action around Black Lives Matter. And so there's a movement called Black Lives Matter in Education. And that spawned it on, and the Assembly voted that we would value this. And so then, in Portland, members last year were wondering, you know, what are we doing around this? And that was, it came to us a little bit late, and we invited many educators to come and discuss, you know, what did they think should be done and what would they like to see? From that, they really talked about building out curriculum, having, you know, diversity, age-appropriate lessons, and discussing other activities. And so, a group of educators was able to do that, but then really also knew that they wanted to build up towards something with more time for the following year. In that time span, the Oregon Education Association, our state affiliate, our Assembly there voted that we, this was something that we'd want to take on. And so from there, the Portland Association of Teachers re-invited those educators, asked more educators to come and participate in designing what a week of action would look like. So they are currently still planning a series of events for this week, including curriculum, as well as, you know, doing art camps and art builds and other activities that they could do to support this action. And one of the things that we would ask is that the school board consider passing this resolution at their next regularly scheduled board meeting.
Okay. And the week in question would be February fourth to eighth, right?
That is correct. And it, this appears that it will be an annual event, though the dates will change. And we're, you know, for this year, we're, you know, still kind of figuring out how to go, but we're definitely very open and interested in further partnership in future years to figure out how to make this a really valuable and meaningful event for everyone.
Any questions?
So, um, sorry.
Yeah, we go ask.
So, I guess, one of the questions I would have, well, two things. I would think that we'd want to do it just on a regular, on an annual basis versus, like we do most other ones, versus a sort of imperperity?
I was wondering, so, yeah, and we're very open to editing, and that's why it's here in advance to working on it. So it could be passed annually, and this could just be for this year, it would certainly be a good idea.
So the things that you described sound like something that would be a very worthwhile activities for our students to participate in. I think I would want to know if the district isn't be endorsing it, with more specificity what that is. And again, this is more of a, like, not just a precedent-setting issue, that if we're going to be endorsing something, especially in students who are involved, say, if a school decided, how we're going to engage is we're going to have a walkout. You know, would we endorse that? So, I guess, I'd want to see what it is we're actually endorsing that students participate in. But maybe less concerned, well, even like teachers and administrators, I'd want to make sure that it's in service to our educational mission. So that, I mean, I know we're not voting on it tonight, so we'll have an opportunity to maybe get more definition around what that is.
Well, so, we did pass, I think, a Native American Day and a Resolution for Hispanic Heritage Month. And I don't think we really had discussions on, you know, what if there was a walkout in all of them? So, is that maybe something that we want to have some guidance on, on what, you know, what parameters are when we are supporting certain activities that are for social justice?
So, I think that's an excellent point. I don't know that we said we were going to endorse actual activities versus we're recognizing the week.
Well, and we recommended, I mean, we said similar things, that we want teachers to provide opportunities for, you know, calling out things in the curriculum and art, music, and learning the history.
Yeah, I guess the other thing I would say is, this, unlike the other ones, where the other ones were initiated by the district.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I'm assuming a certain level of knowledge of the district went into it?
They were pretty general.
Well, so this is, I think this is the first time that we've had, at least in the last year and a half, a resolution that came from an external party. And I just think it-
I think to that, I think to your point, too, is that part of this endorsement is that it endorses and encourages teachers and students to participate annually in the Black Lives, Black Lives Matter Week of Action in schools. But we don't have a lot of information here about what those activities might be in our district. It presumes that there is going to be a list of activities, which is unlike the other ones.
So which kind of brings me to something that we were just discussing earlier, which is, what is that, Black Heritage Month?
Black History.
Black History Month? If there, if we were to look at these events kind of broadly, in terms of Black History Month, like, you know, Hispanic Heritage Month, and then maybe here are some optional activities within those? So maybe we're looking at a resolution that's talking about Black History Month.
Recognizing them both at the same time?
Yeah. And this is maybe something that would fall under Black History Month.
Well, the other piece of that, too, is that we are part of the Council Grade City Schools Male of Color Initiative. And we have, we're getting more engaged in that work, which is some common activities for different big school districts. I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, Superintendent?
I can appreciate wanting to recognize the students, the families, the communities that we're in. I think it's good practice that we recognize those times in the year. But I think more importantly, how do we make these educational in nature? And certainly, if it's the direction of the Board, we would want to make sure our Teaching and Learning Department and our schools are afforded some direction and some guidance around resources and a great opportunity to collaborate with our teachers and leaders around, you know, here's some suggested lessons that are developmentally appropriate, that address topics in objective ways, that, you know, offer those varying perspectives. This is a bit more specific to the Black Lives Movement versus a traditional sort of Black History Month, per se. So, and I think that's what I hear everyone debating, for sure. We have urgency around making sure our underserved students, which include our students of color, you know, that we have deliberate strategies we're implementing, and it is a big point of our conversations and something we want to ramp up our own initiative here in Portland, like other urban districts are doing. So I'm very interested in sort of which direction the Board would like to provide on this topic. Because there's, I think there is a distinction there, perhaps, around-
And I, you know, I, as far as what our intent was, originally, we had a much longer resolution that kind of, we were actually kind of hopeful that it would be something that PPS did and housed curriculum. And then, and then we thought, well, maybe that's a big ask for the first year. And so we would just, you know, this is really, be in support of those who are ready and have those developmentally appropriate and are willing to do that. We know that in some buildings, you know, there may be more members participating and more people ready to do that work than others. So we didn't really mean for this to be a mandate or, you know, a, you know, like, I think individual educators, just like they do, will curate age-appropriate lessons. It was more speaking in support and solidarity of this happening nationally. But we are certainly open and would love, if there's, if it can happen this year, to have curriculum shares or even places where our educators who are creating stuff could share that with others or be made more available. I know not, I don't know how much, you know, what can be accomplished in this timeframe, but that, it's absolutely our interest. We actually kind of scaled that back.
Well, and I'm wondering, too, because we were talking, you were talking about, it's like, this is kind of a work in progress as well. So with, you know, we're talking about walkouts and everything. I mean, we can work with individual schools and educators to, I mean, you know, if it's an Assembly that wants to reflect this or certain classes or, so I mean, there's flexi- but this isn't asking, I mean, there's flexibility with where it could go within the school day, right?
Absolutely, for the educator, for the school. I mean, it didn't, doesn't have to be a school. And I don't, I don't know why walkouts, I mean, that would be, that's not something that we're organizing or asking for. I mean, that's, that would be something else, but, but that's, that's not what this is about. This is really about tying it to the, yeah, and tying it to the movement and having a space where we can have these conversations and supportive.
And to be clear, our committee through PAT is planning to do curriculum shares and activities this, during this week of action. And we'd love to do it as partners with the district. And we'd love to be able to tell teachers that the district supports bringing this work about Black Lives into your classroom on this weekend, letting your students participate, knowing it's part of a national movement to really look at how our schools are supporting or could be better supporting our Black students.
I'm wondering, just maybe a way to approach, again, partly because it's not something we generated, but I think in this, a spirit of enhancing the district's mission, since we're not voting on it, we have about two weeks, maybe, I don't know how much of a discussion there's been between PAT and the Superintendent and staff about what those are and the level of engagement. So maybe that happens between the next two weeks and there's a, we've had a discussion about what's happening, and we think it dovetails and aligns with what we want to accomplish.
I would just want to manage expectations. I think this past year, it was great that we acknowledged many communities of color, and we want to have a fulsome resource and sharing going on. And so, if the Board is going to take up action on this on its next regular meeting the 29th, and this is proposing the week of February fourth, I think bringing attention to the matter and encouraging and giving our teachers sort of license and opportunity to use their professional judgment is a first step to what would be sort of a more year-long scope and sequence where we could organize resources from a lot of educational places that do curate these lessons.
And I'll go back to my point that, I think for consistency, it would be helpful if we thought about it as, you know, Black History Month, and then supporting that, and then activities such as this within that for this year. And then, absolutely, our intent is to be, to have more to offer next year and more support for teachers. But, I mean, I think that that would be a way of, this, it fits with, even though we didn't necessarily start this resolution, our resolutions have been to support communities of color months.
Do we have a resolution being drafted or proposed relating to that?
Well, I was going to suggest, how about, would a Board member be willing to take on the task of coordinating with PAT and with the Superintendent and staff to draft a resolution that would sort of combine-
Be happy to do that.
Okay.
I don't mind doing that, because I think it would be similar to what we did for the other history months and then, including some activities.
That would be great.
I'll work with you.
You two work together. So Director Brim Edwards, Director Esparza Brown will work with PAT and coordinate with the Superintendent's Office.
Or his designees.
Or his designees.
And I can be included, too.
Well, I said the office.
Yeah.
And Student Representative Paisler. And ask that you bring back a draft resolution for Board consideration-
Next week.
-next Thursday? Not this coming Thursday, following Thursday? Okay?
Is it, because that's the board meeting?
No, because it's like in preparation for the Tuesday.
So, so we would have it, that would be nine days from now. So we would have it on, it would be able to go out with the regular Board packet in preparation for the meeting on the 29th.
Don't we have a work session next week?
Yeah. Right.
We could have a, we could have an unveil, not, not vote on it, but just unveil.
Okay, okay. Okay, but in any case, be, have something ready to go out in the packet, so that we can consider it at the January 29th regular meeting.
That's fantastic. Our Racial Equity Committee is meeting Wednesday, and then the subgroup that's been working on the Black Lives Week of Action is actually meeting this Thursday. So if we could start that for their committee meeting, that would be great.
Okay.
Tomorrow?
Thursday. Two days. We've got plenty of time.
Okay. Okay. The next proposed resolution is on public school funding in Oregon.
That is right. We are proud of the school board's adopted legislative agenda for this school year, and absolutely, funding is a top priority for us. We realize repeatedly what a disservice, lack of proper educational funding has been doing to our school systems throughout this state and definitely in this district. This school board resolution is something that I, that we're asking to, again, to be in partnership with. I think it matches up pretty well with your legislative agenda, and it is something else that we'd like to see the Board consider to adopt at their next business meeting. We've, other school districts in Oregon, I believe, have already adopted this or are on track to do a similar activity. And again, we're very open to adding, I mean, it's a very long list of what lack of funding is doing in our schools, and we're also very open to working in partnership to define what a good resolution would be. We never meant to dictate resolutions. It was always meant to be a conversation of partnership of wouldn't, you know, these are things that we all agree on, and wouldn't it be nice?
So, I think the same kind of process makes sense. And my question is to Director Brim Edwards and Director Esparza Brown, would you be willing to take this resolution on as well?
Yes. Speaking for myself, I don't want to speak for you.
Sure.
Although our adoption of our legislative agenda is pretty clear in this respect.
So I think this needs-
I don't think this is going to be a tough one to draft.
Well, I think, I'll just say, one of the, just when I looked at it initially, and I just want to reference Julie's comments also as well, that, you know, having some consistency in format, and so this isn't generally our style, so getting it into our format. I also think it would be more effective if we're not just talking about Oregon, because we're not like, necessarily like everybody else. And I think it may be better to make it more specific to our district and more effective. The other question I have in, for Board members is, so we lay out a number of things that could be funded, and then we just have the resolved that doesn't actually specify that we'd be spending it on the things that we're saying are areas where deficient. So, one of the things that I'd be interested in other Board members, if there's other whereas's that they think we should emphasize of things that aren't happening, and it could be, well, pick the areas where we have a deficiency of resources. So are these the ones that we'd want to emphasize? Because I think almost by calling them out, we then may need to be, like, and therefore, if we get more money, this is what we're going to spend it on. So that's just, I'd be interested in other Board members' point of view.
So, can I suggest that any Board members who have suggestions, forward them on to Directors Brim Edwards and Esparza Brown for consideration when you, when you all work together? Okay? Okay?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Okay. Next is the draft- Sorry, sorry. Yeah, my apologies.
Julia, here's initial.
Okay. Okay, so next item is the draft 2019-20 school calendar. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to?
Yes, I forgot to say, good evening, Directors.
Good evening.
As you know, per Board policy, Superintendent is to bring forth for the Board's approval by May of each school year, a school calendar. I think we all agree that's probably a little late for letting our families know what our thoughts are. Last year, we brought that forth to you at the last week of February. And we're bringing forth to you this evening a draft calendar, because we know we want to get input and feedback from our stakeholders, especially our families. So you have in front of you, I believe, a draft proposed 1920 school calendar and a memo from myself that outlines some of the criteria in constructing this recommendation. You'll find a familiar list of variables that I think we tried to integrate and incorporate with last year's calendar. So a lot of that criteria carries over, but I think just to highlight some of the things that we heard were important, and that was to try to preserve five full instructional days during the year, to minimize short weeks, to, you know, gather input from stakeholders around sort of that Thanksgiving week, make sure that our semesters and our quarters are balanced in their instructional time, of course, that we observe our contractual agreements, et cetera. You'll notice some of our surrounding local districts have identified, in some cases, different start dates. Some of them are waiting for us to sort of publish. But I wanted to just let you know that this is, this is sort of our draft proposal. If you have any immediate sort of thought on what's there, happy to take note of that, but certainly forward to me any additional feedback you may have. The intent is to talk with all of our stakeholders, including PTA and school leaders, et cetera, and bring it back to you for action at our next regular meeting, January 29th.
So I think the post-Labor Day start will be warmly received by our families, which is falls early this year.
This is proposing a before Labor Day, Wednesday before Labor Day.
Oh, the Wednesday before, well, I was just looking at that K start.
I think a lot of families will support the pre-Labor Day.
They're getting used to it, but it's not very popular.
Not all families are on summer vacation.
No families are on summer vacation.
Well, no, I'm, a lot of, I mean, a lot of the arguments comes in, is like, wait till after the, you know, people want to leave town for Labor Day, and that's a luxury that not all of our families have.
Well, we did hear a pretty strong preference from Board last year that we moved towards before Labor Day. So we've honored that here, I will say, certainly in our initial conversations and with PAT leadership. One thing that we've been a little bit, sort of, could go either way on, is whether a Monday, August 26th start or the Wednesday start makes more sense, knowing we would have to make it up at the end.
I guess that's like the one question I have, because when we started, I, all the school years start on different time, dates sometimes, but I guess the two days later on the Wednesday start, is that for some specific reason or just how the days work?
That's what we want to hear, is there a preference?
Okay.
You know, do we want to start with a full week, the first week? Others are saying, let's ease into it. On this question, we're a little more agnostic. I will say, from, on Staff's behalf, one preference is to, it gives us two more days to engage in professional development activity that we can front-load and support our educators and leaders with before students show up.
So what's the first day back for teachers, is the 22nd?
That is correct.
So we have, the 22nd and the 23rd are district-wide professional development days? For those in-building?
To be determined. We have sort of a lot of language in our contract around how those days will get orchestrated.
I'm sorry, if we were going to start, if we were going to have that week of the 26th be all school, which I think is what we did last week, you'd basically move-
Correct.
People would be coming back on the 20th.
That's right.
And there was, you're saying there wasn't a strong preference from our teachers?
There's-
About that?
Well, we're, we're, we're working with our labor partners to gather, you know, sentiment in that regard. I'm sure there's pros and cons to either.
It's already a pretty early end to the year.
But if you're a district that goes to June 20th, it's, it's a bummer.
There's that.
Well, and you never know for snow makeup days, too. I mean, that could always extend the year as well, so.
So, with the snow, with the snow makeup days, so, did the, we have the designated makeup days and then possible makeup days, so those are, if we've already used the other ones, then you go to those federal holidays?
I think we have language, if you recall, in our contractual agreement, that if there's an indication we'll need a makeup day, that we try to capture that precedence day Monday, so that we don't have to tack it on to the end as an option.
But it's a little problematic that it says, the, announced by January 18th, and, well, I guess not.
After early snow.
It's the same caveat we had this year-
Yeah, it's the same amount of time.
After, I think tomorrow, or coming up days, if there's not a snowstorm, then people can count on that three-day weekend.
Okay. I'm going to inter, interrupt here, and I'm just going to caution everyone against making any predictions.
One of the issues with the earlier opening is that some of many, probably of our classrooms are incredibly hot and uncomfortable. And that's, that, that affects teaching, that affects learning.
There's that, and we don't know, I don't know if the month of June traditionally is a little cooler. Aside from professional development activity, I am very sensitive to the fact that we need ample time to make sure our buildings are ready and clean, and it's pretty aggressive activity all summer long, especially when we have some swing, you know, situations going on, which we'll have less of this summer. So that should be a better situation with programs not moving around quite as much.
The other question that I think it came up last year, and it's a year ago, I can't remember it was answered or not, the assertion that AP scores, it made a substantial difference in AP scores to start earlier. I mean, that's, that's, that's one of the cited things here. Is, is there any basis for that?
We'd have to look at some trend data to see if there's a correlation there.
So this is one of those, we do things because somebody says it so with, yeah.
So I don't think that there was an assertion, I'll just, because I know that there was a group of parent, high school parents involved in this, that wasn't the assertion that it impacts the scores, but that it provides an opportunity for more instruction to occur before those tests, which we don't have any control over when they happen. So I don't think that the assertion was that there's some sort of set correlation, rather, what I heard from some high school teachers is they're just packing the curriculum in before the spring tests. And then, I know what happened, I know what happens, since I had a student, an IB student, is like, after they take the test, there's not a lot of instruction happening, because they needed to get it, I mean, they'd had their test, which is sort of the summative experience, yeah. So once it's done, it's done. So instruction they're getting in June or in late May is for most students who are in IB and then AP to some extent as well.
You look at quote senioritis, and it's, I mean, that's, again, why are we moving a couple of days back for the whole district for a subset that's, and the material impact is zero, as far as I can tell?
Well, you'll notice my memo didn't list because-of-state tests as a criteria for, you know, starting a little bit earlier. I like to think our teachers are teaching every day, they have students in front of them. But again, this is sort of, this is where there's a little bit of leeway, if the board or stakeholders feel strongly one way or the other, this is where there's some room to, to think about those days.
So as a teacher, I just want to put out that, having three days at the last week of August, and then a Monday holiday, I mean, that seems like, you wouldn't get a whole lot constructively done at that time, so wondering if we, since we are early, that maybe it would be best to begin that week on the Monday, to have a full instructional week before a day off. That's the way I would look at it.
Yeah, it's, it's either like, one or the other. Start after the Labor Day, or do a whole week.
That's what I was, that's what I was battling with a little bit, a few minutes ago, because it's, I agree with the whole getting more in in the first week, but then it's that argument of like, your first week back to school, it's an entire week, that's a lot for students.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I'm struggling, because it's like, I go back and forth on that, too. Because I have got, I mean, I do get a lot of that teacher input. But, I got, I mean, some students, too, it's like, I mean, some students look at it like, well, why are we coming just for three days?
Exactly.
That, you know what I mean, so, it's.
But, the converse is true, too, I mean, kids and teachers appreciate that, because it's just the opportunity to get into routines, and to set expectations, and then, okay, guys, you're, you're not, you're out of practice a little bit, so you're going to get a little break, and then, we're going to get down to business next week.
I think structurally, it's, it's not, it's stronger to have a week, but.
So I have a question about the snow days. So, this isn't a prediction, it's just a statement about the past.
Watch it.
So.
I don't want to hear a "normally" in there. Go ahead.
Right, there's no "normally," I'm, I'm more to the abnormal, because I think this is very much built to the normal, so it basically has four days, four snow days, which maybe for Portland's a little bit above normal. But if you have a abnormal, my under, I thought, well, we agreed, we still have to meet the 990, so.
Correct.
If, if we had more than four days that we needed to make up, in theory, we might need to indicate that the 11th, 12th, and 15th, in sort of worst-case scenario, if that's what got us to the 990. I'm just concerned, because what, what happens is, somehow, families look at this calendar, they see the very last potential day, whatever it is, and a lot of people make plans. And, so if they're, you know, when this little arrow in the small box that says last day of school on the 5th, I'm afraid people might start going somewhere on the 6th, so that somehow, we just don't then get in a position, that people are like, you told us, the calendar said X, and yet, we haven't still met the instructional minimal hours for the state.
Yeah. Well, as you know, this was a, a topic in our bargaining sessions, about how to make sure we both comply with required student time, and sort of recognize, it would be a conversation, do we, we find another place where we kind of build that in, or the running assumption is, we would have to go longer. And, if that happens early enough in the calendar year, we would need to message that to everybody, so they can plan accordingly. What I'm hearing you say is, by visually putting it on here, it might signal to people, just recognize that, if there is storms, we will have to perhaps take that Thursday, Friday as well.
I agree, that if we don't indicate the possibility in some way, people get hopping mad.
And I'm responsible for the weather, too.
I had just one more thing, I think, for the good of the order, just as a student, I like how, I mean, this might be compared with other years, but I like how we've cleaned up November. I know that this year, that was a lot better for students, because we had a lot less four-day weeks or three-day weeks, which means, at least for high school, we had more flex days to go in and meet with teachers, and this gets, because our semester carries over to January, that allows more time before we leave for the winter break to get work done and all that, so, I think this is, coming from me, I think this is a good foundation for just November going forward, just clean it up, more, you know, more, longer weeks and everything, so, yeah.
So, there was, was PPS off this year, with the winter break, compared to other districts?
It was a little bit of both, all around the state.
I mean, we had one constituent who wrote us, they had a student in Beaverton and in Portland, but they were different, so I'm just wondering if there's some, because that does seem to be, just whether it's childcare, or, I mean, a whole host of activities, if there's some sort of consistency.
Just kind of couldn't have fallen weirder this year, and districts did it differently.
We had a very early Thanksgiving this year.
We were out, yeah.
So, and I think it.
But then we were out on the 14th.
But it threw a lot of things off, I think.
Yeah.
So this seems like this would be pretty conventional?
Yeah.
I think the, the way the holidays fall in the calendar year, I didn't crosswalk to local districts' our, our winter break, I have Beaverton's in front of me, which lines up exactly to the proposed calendar, as well as PSU's calendar.
Well, and also, because, because of the way that it fell, we had not just two full school weeks, but then the additional two days for New Year, so it ended up being pretty significantly longer. Yeah, well, I mean, it was our decision to end on the, I think it was the 14th, instead of the 21st, which would have captured the New Years in that second week.
What staff is continuing, going to continue working on, in collaboration with our partners, this speaks to the student days, we want to try to serve, have this document serve a little bit more as a master calendar for our employee groups, so, for example, we have 30 designated Tuesdays per contract, when staff meetings are to occur, so we want to indicate those on here, so our teachers know when they'll be staying after school, and similarly, for our principals, when they're expected back, what days our Leadership Institute will take place, et cetera. So, you, you can expect to see a little more detail in the final version. Okay.
Okay.
Great feedback, great discussion, it's the one similar to what we've been having internally, and with stakeholders, so let us know, and you'll see it again in three weeks.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, we're going to move on to the PSU enrollment projections, and the Portland Plan.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to introduce yourselves, and, and what your jobs are, and why you're here, and then you can, then you can launch into.
Great.
Can I, can I give a little intro? I'm very excited about this presentation, so, I'm really looking forward to this, so, please.
Thank you. I'm Charles Reynerson, from Portland State University Population Research Center, and I'm the, I lead up the, the team that does the annual population forecast for Portland Public Schools, among other things. Portland Public Schools is one of about 30 Oregon school districts that we've done enrollment projections for over the past 10 to 12 years. And, we do them annually, for PPS. And I've got a PowerPoint presentation here, that, that we're going to launch into after we hear from Joe Zender.
And I'm Joe Zender, I'm the chief planner, with the City of Portland Bureau Planning and Sustainability, so, you have the annual, and sort of the near-term forecast here, and our forecasts and plans, that I'm here to talk about tonight, go out to 2035. So it's more of, of a long-range look, at the number of households in the housing, and how it might be distributed across the city.
Okay, the, is somebody going to turn on our PowerPoint, right?
Can somebody help figure out how to?
So, as I mentioned, we've been doing these forecasts annually, we actually have a tr, a history of going all the way back to the 1970s, working with Portland Public Schools. We've done enrollment projections in the 70s, the 80s, and this is the 20th consecutive year, that we've done long-range enrollment projections for Portland Public Schools. We typically do a, a low, middle, and high scenario at the district level, and then the, the middle scenario is broken out into forecasts for individual schools, by, also forecasts of the number of residents, by high school cluster attending any PPS school, number of residents by attendance area, attending any PPS school, so all of those are available on, in our annual reports. The, in December, of last December, we delivered a one-year forecast, that's used in part, partly for teacher allocation, and then later, in March, we'll deliver the 15-year long-range forecast. So, when I, I like to evaluate our past forecasts, and the first thing I usually look at is the K-12 total, I like to see it stay within 1% of actual enrollment, and I like to see the middle series be the, the most reliable, compared with the, the high and low. And, going back to the, the year that enrollment started to rebound, 2009, I'm going to show, quickly, run through a, a series of, of our low, middle, and high-range forecasts, the, the middle range being that, that line, the red line. And it, in the forecast that we did during the '09-10 school year, the, the middle forecast is still the most accurate. The following year, all of these forecasts, the, the middle is within 1% of, of the actual enrollment, which is the black lines with the, the squares. Likewise, the 2011 school year, middle forecast is still the most reliable. Then, the, after 2015, the growth trajectory started to slow a bit, so the forecast that we did during the 2013-14 school year, actually, the current year's enrollment, which is the last square there on the right, has fallen below the low forecast, and likewise, 2015 base year, so you can see where we've adjusted our expectation, and again, this is just total K-12. This is last year's forecast, it is, with, actual enrollment was within 1% of the middle series, however, it's also below the low series. So, we've got a preliminary look at a long-range forecast, we'll finalize it in March, and, again, we're showing growth, but at a lower pace than what we had been.
So, excuse me, one thing I'd like to request is, I'd like for these documents to be available to the general public, but I think we need some context, for doc, when I look at these documents, there's no sort of definition of what, what we're seeing, so, I appreciate the oral commentary, but to have these documents mean anything to anybody who is not at the meeting, I think it would be helpful that we have the commentary, this is, to your point, Director Bailey, of having some narrative that describes what it is we're, we're seeing.
So we usually get a pretty meaty annual report, with the, the forecast is finalized.
We usually get a pretty thick annual report, when the forecast is finalized, that does just that, goes, goes through past forecasts.
Right, and this, this presentation has speaker notes on every slide, and in fact, some of them refer to past annual reports, and, and again, this, later this year, there'll be a, an annual report corresponding to the newest forecast.
I guess, maybe it'd be useful to have the speaker notes be available, again, because if you're not watching, if you get this, doesn't mean anything, and I appreciate we'll be getting another report, but I just think, if we're going to be using this as a basis of discussion, it would be helpful to the broader public to be able to interpret what this means, so, that'd be great.
Yeah, and in fact, that's why, I, rather than animating what I just ran through, each one's a separate slide, so if somebody wants to print a PDF of it, with the notes pages, you know, there's.
Excellent, thank you.
There, you could layer them on top of each other, but then you can't do that with the, with the PDF.
So, so do you have a sense of why you were low, what, what assumptions didn't hold?
Well, we're, we're going to see a little more of that. So, this, these are the preliminary, these charts appear in the, in the annual report every year, and we can see a new high, middle, and low, the low being pretty flat, and chart two, really, you know, it's the entry grades that really matter, and this year is the sixth consecutive year of a declining kindergarten enrollment, and we'll, we'll look even closer at that in a couple of slides. So, elementary enrollment peaked in, two years ago, and it started to decline, so, and we know a lot more about births now than we did a few years ago. Amazing decline in number of births, in the US, the nation, and particularly Multnomah County, the number of babies born to women residing in Multnomah County in, in 2017, was the lowest since 1978, when there were one-third fewer residents of the county.
What was the rate?
Reason?
What was the rate?
Oh, the rate, oh. Yeah, to, total fertility rate, 1.25 in 2017, for the county, and even a bit lower for Portland Public Schools. So, but, on the other hand, chart four shows that high school enrollment will continue to grow, under all three scenarios, low, middle, and high, because of that momentum from, we had six years of, of kindergarten growth prior to 2012, so that's pushing on through to the upper grades.
So, you know, we can't know definitively why people are doing whatever they're doing or not doing, but it's curious to me, that the, the kindergarten enrollment went up during the recession. That's counterintuitive, I would have expected the opposite.
Well, I've, I've got a couple of slides on that, but, you know, this is just quickly, bullet points describing how we do the forecast, one of the things I wanted to point out is, well, we, we have birth data, we look at residential development, especially affordable housing, and we look at the capacity and, and the allocation of growth from the Portland Plan. We also collaborate closely with district staff, you know, they let us know what's going on, in terms of changes, boundary changes, of course, and even more detail, number of lottery slots, et cetera, so, that's important. However, we can't really anticipate things like, suddenly a school gets more popular, you know, so, we've got things built in, like the capture rate of neighborhood children, you know, we, we, we don't want to be too necessarily optimistic, that things are going to improve if they're low, so, they're generally status quo, so that can, that can really make things change at the individual school level. There's our, our kindergarten trend, the bottom line, the solid line, and it does track pretty well with the birth trend, these are births lagged by five years, so that peak there, that occurred in, in fall of 2012, with the biggest kindergarten of over 4,200 students, that actually aligns with the peak births of 2006-7, which was, you know, before the recession. So, births started falling during the recession, most people in my profession asserted that, well, it's, it's due to the economy, however, they've continued even after the economy got better, there's other long-term reasons for births to fall. So we've seen, we've measured births through 2017, probably a little optimistic about that rebound there on the, on the top line, so, that may change before March, but we're looking at a few more years of flat or declining kindergarten enrollment.
So, I, I was looking at this chart, and what are your assumptions that make you think it's, there's going to be a rebound?
Population growth, you know, the, the, you're going to hear about how much potential the city has to, to add more housing, and, you know, a lot of it is, maybe not, maybe most of it's not the kind of. most of it's not the kind of housing that families are gonna live in, but
Right.
Some of it is. And and there is, you know, continued migration into into the city. And so we're, especially with the affordable housing coming online, you know, with bigger units, we're measuring that. And we're seeing, you know, probably a change from what we've seen the last several years, when most everything that got built was market-rate studios and one-bedrooms.
Right.
So so looking at it another way, this is a ratio of kindergarten enrollment to births. And really hard to explain. It did, as kindergarten enrollment was was going up, the ratio, kindergarten enrollment went up faster than corresponding births. That's the point of the the left side of the chart. Then it was pretty stable for all the way up until full-day kindergarten was implemented in twenty-fifteen. So that's that's where we thought we were in terms of migration between, you know, birth and age five. Then the last three years, we've had this decline, which, you know, that that part is hard to explain. Just maybe people, people being able to move up into bigger housing outside the district, hard to know.
So so that decline in the last year doesn't correlate with a commensurate decline in commensurate decline in births however many years prior?
Right.
So it's a
Where where that line is moving up, you know, kindergarten enrollment outpaced what we'd expect based on births. Where that line is going down, the last three years, kindergarten enrollment has has gone down
Interesting.
More than the corresponding births.
How has catchment rate, what are the what are the trends in catchment rate? I mean, does that indicate that people are staying in town, they're just not sending their kids to PPS, or are they moving out?
Well, it's it's probably, so we've always got some out net outflow between birth and age five. Notice, you know, those ratios, even at their highest, were at point seven-five. So we think catchment rates between point eight oh and point eight-two. So that means a few more people, there's lots of churn in in young families, you know, moving. So a few more people moving out than in within, you know, given the district's boundaries being, including central city neighborhoods. So so, yeah, it's it's a combination, but we, you know, there's no evidence that there's a big increase in private school enrollment. So it probably is mostly due to mobility rather than than capture. So here's another, more evidence of more people moving out than in. This, I like to look at elementary grades, because people probably aren't making decisions between grade two and five about whether to, you know, enter or exit the public school system. You know, it's probably a balance of choice. And and if there is a, you know, where the number differs from one, the ratio of this year's enrollment to last year's enrollment, that probably is all about mobility, migration. So it, in the years where there was, you know, growth, the ratio was up to point nine-nine. And and we've had a couple of years where it's been close to point nine-eight. The forecast is is on the right, expecting, you know, more long-term, but not, you know, we're not expecting to go beyond what we've seen in the past. Entering middle school, on the other hand, you know, this has really been low the last few years. So this is a combination of mobility, maybe similar to the elementary grades, plus choice. You know, it does appear that that there, you know, we doubt that we're, the city, that the district is losing 5% of its residents, you know, between age twelve and thirteen, or eleven and twelve, whatever it is. You know, it probably is some loss to other options. So we're not, we're, here we are with a long-term forecast that's not a whole lot more robust than than recent history.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat what the assessment was on the middle school? You said it wasn't likely that we've just lost 5% of the population between that age bracket. So there's some, they're choosing something besides, likely choosing something besides our middle grades or middle schools?
Yeah, exactly. So somehow, you know, you compare this year's enrollment, this year's sixth-grade enrollment, everybody going to PPS schools, 6% lower than last year's fifth-grade enrollment.
That's absolutely true.
But here's here's the the good news for return to high school. Long, long ago, the the progression rate from eighth grade to ninth grade was was much higher, like, you know, 12% higher than eighth grade. Back in, a lot of people would go through eighth grade in in private schools and come to public school at PPS. About ten years ago, that rate fell below one. And it's been, you know, very low in in twenty-fourteen, sixteen, seventeen. But this current year, you had the highest ratio of ninth grade, eighth grade since two thousand nine. So this appears to be rebounding. People are, they'd be happy with the rebuilt schools, eager to go there.
So what's the number of that jump?
Number?
Not the percentage, I like this number of students.
Oh, well, if there are four thousand students per grade level, a one, 1% of that would be forty. So if it's 3%, 4% higher than it had been, you know, that could be another hundred and sixty students or so
So
choosing to go to Portland high schools.
Yeah. So we we got a hundred and fifty student jump for Franklin and another hundred and fifty jump for Roosevelt when they opened.
Yeah, six hundred.
And my alma mater, Grant High School, look for some increase next next year. So this was in the report a couple of years ago. People always wanna know about, you know, how many kids live in certain types of housing. They drive down the street and they see apartment buildings going up, they assume that there's gonna be a lot of kids. But we've got, it's kinda hard to read at this scale, sorry about that. But basically, the the majority of PPS students live in single-family homes. And that's what that chart eleven in the lower right shows. And majority of those are living in homes that are more than thirty years old, no surprise. However, the the student, number of students per home is highest in the newest homes. And that's what chart ten is showing. The affordable apartments, that includes all kinds of affordable apartments, so it doesn't tell the whole story. But the next slide, which I believe is my last one, this is, drills down a little deeper. This is from a report that we issued in twenty-seventeen. I wanted to show the extreme, because I'm always getting this question, well, if there's gonna be a hundred housing units, how many kids are there gonna be? Sorry, can't tell you. You know, you gotta tell me more about, are these gonna be large units? Are they gonna be affordable? Are they gonna have amenities like playgrounds? Are they gonna be close to schools? So this is the extreme studio and one-bedroom market-rate apartments, one student per hundred units, whereas income-restricted, large units, two, three, four-bedroom units. And these are actual measurements from actual developments. And it ranges widely from one student per hundred units to more than a hundred students per hundred units.
And that's forecast, or that's based on what we've seen from like development?
Yeah, that's, we've met, this is measured from student points and tax lot and multifamily information, lining them up and comparing them. And this is, this is why, you know, if if, this is why we look closely at affordable housing. And and that's, that's in the report every year, too. We try to do an inventory of how many units are there gonna be in two-plus-bedroom So I hope I've left time for Zander.
Thank you. And I think it's the right moment to acknowledge that you have been rather remarkably on the money in the last few years.
Thank you.
So we're gonna shift gears, is that what's next? Okay. There, I brought some slides as well, but so.
Roseanne, can you work your magic?
I guess while Roseanne's working her magic, maybe
Well, and while, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, I was gonna just fill the space.
Oh, hey, so
There we go, there we go.
Oh, there you go, there you go. Okay. So this is terribly interesting every time we have this comparison. And what's interesting for me to is to reflect back on, in the past, during the Portland Plan days especially, and that's like two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, we worked very closely with PPS, because that was the heart of what that plan was about in part. And since then, we periodically cross paths in terms of these population forecasts. What I'm about to show you is done a different way, but tells a similar story. It's just that it's, we don't have the the breakdown of births and the specific information that's more relevant to what the schools are going through, if you're trying to design schools for program and for attendance. But the big picture is that by a hundred, by twenty-thirty-five, which is the most recent comprehensive plan that we've completed, and we just completed it last year, you've got several hundred thousand more people moving to the, in Portland, both increase of population here and in migration driving that. For the purposes of the planning that we do, we really more often look at households, because part of what we're doing is trying to figure out how the market and our programs are going to provide housing to meet this expected growth forecast. This growth forecast starts by metro government forecasting it for the entire region. It's an econometric model, so it's driven by really the jobs part of the forecast first, and then how much each of the different jurisdictions in the region can reasonably expect to attract in terms of that share of how of new households. So we typically get 30-plus percent and have been overperforming on what's expected the city to produce or attract over the coming years. So by twenty-thirty-five, it's a hundred and twenty-three thousand more households. That's 30-plus percent growth for the city as a whole. And where's it gonna go? The plan that we prepared, just adopted by city council, is forecasting that it's going in these areas that we're calling these centers of three different sort of scales, the central city and gateway, those are the two big ones. Town centers, which are more like Hollywood, is the, and Lentz are are two big, well-known examples of this, tend to be bigger, more more units per acre. They're part of the regional system, they're served by transit, big transit. And then these orange ones, the smaller ones, are the, you you know very well, if you live in the city, are these what we're calling neighborhood-scale centers that are very much emergent over the last decade, and more the concentration of where folks are moving. So I, in our plan, 50% of the growth that we expect between now and twenty-thirty-five is being attracted to the town center and the smaller centers. Thirty percent in the central city, which is doubling the number of units in the central city, and we're really on pace, we're on pace so far to see all of this, honestly, although we're heading into a business cycle. And then 20% is in the the rest of the areas that aren't a center or corridor. So geographically, that's the scheme that seems to be operative. And just, I wanted to make the point of, you know, when you think of neighborhoods in Portland, we have ninety-four different named geographic neighborhoods. But really, they're market areas, neighborhood-share centers, neighborhood-share a set of schools, there's usually a few schools in in each of these areas, a commercial district, or a couple of commercial districts and transit lines. And it takes the total population and buying power that's contained in really not ninety-four, but 24 of these market areas, to support the development that we see take place in them. And so it gave us a better sort of scale to work from. The ninety-four is closer to the old days when the neighborhoods were defined by what the schools were in their area. This groups them together. More gives us an economic basis, because part of what we wanna do in this plan is to use that forecast growth that's being attracted to Portland, and the investment that it's gonna take to be able to house that growth in the city, to help improve different parts of town in very specific ways, to increase their walkability, to increase their access to goods and services, to increase their access to amenities, parks, and schools, to increase the supply of affordable housing that's in the higher opportunity areas. That investment that's coming to meet this housing demand is part of what builds, is the the largest part of what builds our city. So
I have a question just about that last slide. These twenty, twenty or twenty-four regions, are they recognized by anybody else other than just as a planning tool?
You know, they were invented as a planning tool. So they're mostly a planning tool.
Okay.
Director, yeah. We did them, but across the city now, in terms of a lot of the service planning and infrastructure planning, we're using this collection of of market areas, because we can link growth in dollars and service, and it corresponds to transit trips and the like. Think of it, it's like a market shed.
Okay.
And they roughly correspond to where the neighborhood coalitions are. So politically, there's some alignment as well.
So they're grouping some neighborhoods.
Yeah. And and the big, the big trick is that in the old days, if it was in this neighborhood and that neighborhood, who got to call the shot as to what happens? That would be a lot of where our debate was. Here, it's five neighborhoods per market area. So you all have a collective interest in what happens on Hawthorne. You have a collective interest in what happens. And so this is just another representation of how this growth in households could play out across the city. So here, here is, today, yellow is greater concentration of of households. And you can see that when it actually plays out, it looks like that centers and corridors diagram that we were we're talking about. The part of this, as I was listening to what Charles was saying, the part of this that's really stymying this expectation of how the development's going to take place is the economics of the housing market, which I'll go into in a minute. And that may be part of what we're seeing play out in terms of who and what size households, and how many households can afford to live in different parts of town. But these are the parts of town where we believe there's the greatest demand, we're gonna see the the most amount of the, and capacity, place where you can build the units, and we'll see these units arising.
And and that what-size household piece is interesting. If you could, as you're going along, speculate on how your suppositions might be different if we get legislative action that allows for multifamily housing in every corner and every community.
Yeah, I've got that coming. That's a, that's, that's the other part of this that was occurring to me as well. Okay. So that's, and then here's, this is just another representation of how it's gonna be distributed. So these are our coalitions that you all are probably, or neighborhood coalitions probably you're aware of. There's seven of them. And when we look at where the growth is in this particular forecast, you know, you're seeing a lot of it in southeast, that's what southeast uplift, and east Portland, and NPNS, that's north Portland. We're in the process now of planning a major new max line in southwest. But that's really those units we would see. That change we'll see outside this twenty-thirty-five timeframe. And this is an interesting part of the story that's always been hard to get a handle on vis-à-vis school. We're doubling the number of residential units in the central city. And especially now that we have inclusionary housing, we're proportionally increasing the number of affordable housing units in the central city. So if it goes with what Charles is saying about that being a family unit very often, that could dramatically or substantively change the demand or the presence of school-age children in the central city. And there's lots of different parts of the central city where we're likely between now and twenty-thirty-five to see those happen. But really, the concentration so far has been in the north part of the Pearl. We're seeing a big pop in expected growth in the Lloyd District. And there's still a great deal of south waterfront to develop. And then the whole Goose Hollow, there's lots of the parts of the central city with And then the whole Goose Hollow, there's lots of the parts of the central city with housing capacity. Okay, so in terms of the types of units, this forecast and this growth projection goes with increasing the number of multifamily units. In no small part, that's because of price and that's because of the land we have. So much of our land is tied up in single-family zoning today that the place where we actually have the ability to provide units and the market will build them if the demand and the rents are there, is in our multifamily, multifamily and mixed-use corridor areas. We're, I'll talk about something at the end that could change that, it won't totally overthrow that model, but increasingly it's gonna be mixed-use or multifamily housing. And Portland is somewhat new to the experience of the family, families in multifamily housing across the economic spectrum, and that's a coming thing that we're going to see more and more of, or this population forecast is gonna manifest totally differently. Like, to a certain extent, that has to happen. We've seen it in other west coast cities that have been at this type of development that include families longer. So we can't just assume it's always studios. And then based on this forecast, this is once again just mining the metro data that we see a lower percentage of households with children by 2035, but more households. So I threw this in and I realized I don't know what the forecast was telling us about the number of children by 2035.
So it'd be nineteen, nineteen percent of eight hundred and forty-two thousand?
Yep.
Which is more than twenty-seven percent of six hundred and thirty-nine?
Right.
Households.
This is households. Households, this is a hundred, a hundred and twenty-three thousand more households. Nineteen percent of, it'll be three hundred and fifty thousand households, something like that.
And what is it now?
That's the whole city, which PPS is three quarters.
Right.
Three quarters.
Well, it was eighty percent in the 2010 census, I believe.
And so, and what you're gonna see next is, I just wanna do this quickly, you know, because I think I'd rather be answering or having discussion. A big part of what's gonna shape this is in where these households with children land and where the lower-income household lands is driven by the housing supply and the cost of housing. We have new residences the gray, the new housing units is the darker color bar. This has been our story for a while where we're growing faster than we're producing units and that's driving up demand. And up until recently, that's been dramatic changes in rents. It started to stabilize in terms of the growth of that rent. But there's a long story here, but a part of our trick is tricking the market to overbuild is, is to say it glibly, but we need to, we traditionally are a conservative market that doesn't overbuild in terms of more housing than the number of residents. And so we have this constant price pressure. But you're gonna, you're starting to see it moderate here as the vacancy rate goes down and rents are starting to flatten. However, when you look.
Can you go back to that for one second, starting to see it flatten when? Cause not, not yet, well, now, we have.
It's compared to the rate, it's just relative.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's, these things are, and rent going back down, well, that's not typically what you're going to see in this situation, but it's the rate of growth.
Rate of increases.
Rate of increases is what I meant, yeah.
Can I just point out, fourteen hundred bucks a month is not a family-friendly rent for a lot of people.
Well, for a lot of people, yes.
Yeah, so.
And, well, yeah, and actually that's, I didn't include all the affordability information, but increasingly, as Portland is growing in its population distribution, just like the nation is at either end of the income spectrum, a lot of that growth, that hundred and twenty-three thousand households we're gonna expect to see in the forecast is a lower-income household. But if something doesn't moderate in this or in the production of housing supply, that's really, can't happen because you're not gonna be able to afford to be that household in the city, or you're gonna double up, or you're gonna live in substandard housing, all these different tactics to make ends meet. Here's another, just sort of graphic representation of the rate and style. This is single-family home sales. Blue is affordable to a hundred percent median family income, and that was 2000, 2001. You start to see a change in, oh, it's a time series, I didn't realize that. By the end.
Not a lot of blue left.
Well, no, by 2017, there's hardly any blue left, and most of it's not in Portland Public School District.
It's only the river.
And these are single-family houses, so that, that part's coming next. And this is a piece of analysis that we do, this is a piece of analysis that we do around the question of gentrification and displacement, but mostly it's looking at, as we go through these market rate, market changes, where should we be paying attention to it having a disproportionate impact on, proportionate impact on low-income households with housing vulnerability, where a rent increase doesn't just mean you move, it means you could be out of housing. And so this, and we do this by comparing these two layers, economic vulnerability, which measures a number of different factors, including income and race and education level, to show different parts of town where you have higher concentration of households that have hot, more of a vulnerability factor. So the darker the color means the more housing, housing vulnerable a household is. And we compare that with how the real estate market and, and the land, the housing value, the housing costs and rents in those areas have been changing. And you can see that areas that aren't colored in are already unaffordable and have been for a long time. And as you gradate to the, up to the orange and the yellow, these are places where up until this last year when we did this, you weren't seeing the price pressure there, you clearly are now. So the price pressure on households goes to the full extent of the city and is concentrated out east, which used to be an area that was a receiving area for lower-income households. So part of our tactic is to increase the supply of housing to the, you know, and getting the most housing that we can out of the land that we have, and to do this all within a construct where it works with the ability of our different systems, transit and schools and parks to accommodate that. But it's trying to bring back the full range of housing types, not just single-family houses and apartment blocks, but that sort of scale of smaller, duplexes, triflexes, smaller apartment blocks, garden apartments and up to your central city kind of buildings that we actually have seen in the historic development of the city, but our zoning now has long since kind of been a barrier to. So we're working on increasing that in those single-family neighborhoods as well. And so, yeah.
Can I just make one point? You're, you're the perfect person to be having this conversation with, and I appreciate the opportunity very much. And you're talking about, you're, you're going into the planning for the future part in terms of where are we gonna try to build all of this housing and how do we make it work with our other systems, including schools? So presumably you're looking at the capacity of the, our school infrastructure that we already have. But one other thing that I wonder if you all consider in these assessments is looking at what we know to be the impact on educational outcomes of forced mobility? And how do you, how do we have a concentrated strategy on building housing specifically to address students being able to stay in their same schools? Just thinking of that as a factor.
Yeah, and actually, I, that's been a topic of discussion. The cost of housing is, of course, driven by a supply and demand kind of situation. And so when I said earlier that we need to trick the market or just find a way to incentivize the market to build housing, even though it may not make economic sense, you're gonna drive vacancy rates down for a while, rents may stabilize, you're not earning that sort of increasing return you can. If we don't overbuild, we're always gonna be lagging behind the needed household, that, the housing that we need to accommodate our growth, or that growth will stop. But then if that does happen, we run a real risk, I believe, of becoming even more sort of income separated, where lower-income households can't even afford to be in the city. So if you're in the city, you have more resources. And that changes not just, it, it absolutely affects the student mobility you're talking about, but it does it also at a sort of a big regional scale. We're moving whole groups of population due to economic pressure that way. So the trick, so the trick, the, the strategy that's built in here is to find ways acceptable to Portland that work with the kind of city that we're trying to succeed, that increases the range of types of units and the number of units across the city to the extent, maximum extent we can. The market will build it, we can't overbuild our systems or we absorb the externalities of that. However, if we keep the two in pace, that helps with the overall housing pressure. And then if we're providing affordable housing, it has to be program housing. We have to dedicate resources, which we have as a city, between the city's housing bond and the new regional housing bond, and like, this is a city that's stepping up to providing affordable housing, but that's the housing that really creates stability. And we're trying to locate that housing in neighborhoods where a lot of the amenities that just support the success of a household that lives there, and that's schools, actually, and parks and that sort of thing, put housing in those neighborhoods too, rather than just put them on places where we already have a stressed-out system in inadequate parts of those. That's, that's the overall strategy.
Thank you.
So the last thing is just, in the single-family today, in our neighborhoods, you can build a house, and you can build a house with an ADU. And if you, so basically even all of our single-family neighborhoods, and you saw that so much of that housing is accounting for your students, it's, two units can be built. I don't know ADUs and how much they're producing in terms of, hopes, I apologize for the scramble of the formatting, of producing for PPS students. But the proposal that's on the table that we'll all be discussing over the next year is to go back to a, a, a single-family, a traditional single-dwelling area where if you get the size of the building that stays within the context of the place, we care less about how many units are in it. And so what it does is it allows you to pick something that looks like a single-family house and put three units in it. And what that allows you to do is to have a single-family kind of structure, if not actual ownership, which is a preferred thing often for households with children, in a smaller size, because typically today, our single-family houses that get built when you tear down something are four, five thousand square feet, it'll, these'll be eighteen hundred square feet. This is like what a bungalow is, it's a new step back to that. The amount of those that'll be produced is gonna be driven by the market. It's not gonna be wholesale change in these neighborhoods, but increasingly, we're going to be putting neighbor, putting units back into the inner neighborhoods especially that can be family-sized, lower cost because they're smaller, and it may be affecting your student body.
So can you talk a little bit about the process for the city in terms of developing this plan for how we're gonna encourage growth in the ways we think that are beneficial for our citizens and our students?
Well, yeah, the, the, you know, there's a set of tools that we have in our planning and sustainability toolbox, zoning and development entitlements and where transportation investments go and where transit investments go, that we are, have been in the process over the last few years of rewriting, re-engineering to accommodate this growth strategy that I just showed you. So those kind of basic regulations are being put in place. And with two big pieces coming this, this winter, this fall, being the change I just talked about for single dwellings and a change for how we do our multifamily that just squeezes more, that improves the design of the buildings, and mostly this is relevant out east in David Douglas and those districts, but improves the design of the building and improves the ability to get family-sized and more units out of them. So that's, once again, let's, let's get more units out of the land that we have. And then the Housing Bureau is stepping up to mobilize to start getting the dollars that we've all voted on for affordable housing out the door and spending that in ways that correspond with this strategy of trying to get in, get a supply of affordable housing in some of those neighborhoods that if we don't do anything, are going to see increasing gentrification pressure. So get ahead of the market there and also continue to invest in, it's a higher-cost land, but to get units in these high amenity neighborhoods that are the inner neighborhoods just because at the end of the day, we want a permanent supply of affordable housing in as many neighborhoods as we can get and as many of your schools as we can get. So those two pieces are the main levers right now.
So can, can you talk about how the city and school districts, I mean, especially PPS, but I mean, I'm interested in how other school districts as well? How do we interact? Do we interact? Is there coordination and planning? Is there, are school locations being taken into consideration during decisions about, you know, incentivizing development or?
Yes and no, I mean, it depends on what you really mean by the question. So a certain extent, well, we work really well with Portland Public Schools and like to. You see that our, our forecasts are sort of at two different scales, but we share information with PSU that's part of the, the data that they crunch and are very interested in supporting the needs of PPS in these neighborhoods that are growing. The, and we have in the comprehensive plan, and we, we, we share, I believe, our forecasts of where we think we're gonna be in twenty-five, the twenty-five years as the plan builds out, and you all get an annual sort of check-in on that anyway, that is really valuable for us to sort of watch to see if these overall trends are happening. The, so there's the dilemma. This is the first year that we've declared in this comprehensive plan, school infrastructure, the adequacy of schools to be able to deliver infrastructure to be a critical piece that can be considered a constraint on the ability to grow. So we did that this time.
That's good.
We hadn't done that before.
So what'd you come up with?
Well, we came up with the devil's bargain, which is that David Douglas was the district that was, that was not able to raise funds to be able to meet their, they could have had a demonstrated deficiency across the board in classrooms so that we downzoned in David Douglas a bit. And in a setting, in a situation where the production of housing and serving that housing is key towards our overall ability to moderate the cost of housing and the ability of lower-income households and, you know, like, the full range of households that live in the city, creating roadblocks to housing is, has a very definite negative impact on the cost of housing. So that was the dilemma we were struggling out with out there. And so, but because of that have, it's almost a bit of an experiment, I guess, selectively done some downzoning in East Portland.
What about looking at the other side of the spectrum? I mean, what about looking at all those new units in northwest Portland and inner northeast Portland and recognizing that our facilities that we have currently are basically at capacity? Is there any conversation around that or conversation around the sort of mythical school placeholder at the post office site or?
Well, yeah, of course there is. We keep seeing this growing population, growing number of households in the central city. And we have, watch it pretty closely in terms of the birth rates amongst those households and child retention, you know, like, are the households with the children staying? There's a slow increase, but a steady sort of rise of that. And we know that Chapman and some of the other schools in that catchment area are sort of already at capacity. So we've wondered. So we've wondered, and if and when additional school capacity that would catch, that would serve these households fits into the overall, you know, capital system for the school system. But it's not, it's, you know, it's, it moves more slowly, but it's a, I believe there is this sort of steady low geographically based rising heat.
Isn't there, that supposed to be part of the planning process? That when there's housing, zoning for housing and units, that there's also property available for, you know, enroll capture, you know, serving those kids that may or may not move in there? I mean, I, I, I think of Forest Park twenty-plus years ago, and how there was a development out there that was planned and number of units and space reserved for a school to serve those kids. Isn't that what, what our land use system is supposed to?
Well, you know, the differences, yeah, no, I, I understand, Director Bailey. We're a built-out city, so the greenfield notion of identifying a piece of real estate for school expansion, that's why we're always putting, it could be the post office, you know, prospective approaches on the, in these plans, but we haven't, that's when we would be working with PPS to see about the capital programming, the capital planning for PPS, and when it aligns with this expansion. It's just, that has not been, reached a trigger point or been the priority for the last few years we've been working on this plan. Yeah.
Yeah, so how, how, how do we get there to where we're, we can anticipate in terms of our bonding program going forward, so that we're not caught behind the eight ball in schools going forward?
That is, you know, there's a lot, this is the other thing, that please don't get the impression that any of the changes that we've made dramatically increased the development capacity in any of these areas. Like, there's today, a lot more housing that could be built in any one of these places or neighborhoods. What we've done is, we've tried to improve it in terms of the quality of design of the building. We've tried to add more where we need it. We've tried to settle some of the conflicts, because one of the reasons it slows down housing production is that it, the, the shocking, it, it, it's disturbing in terms of the, how the buildings arrive and look on the street, and you end up with land use appeals and things that slow down the progress. But we have had this development capacity on the books since the eighties. Now the market's finally showing up to deliver it, which is an interesting sort of moment to be in, and, which is a good moment to be in. And what we're finding is that we're not, even though with that capacity, not keeping up with the demand of people who want to live here, and the demand of people who want to live here with money, that's leading to the construction of housing. Yeah.
So I, I think I'm the one person up here that, well, on the school board at least, that does it have a really long history in Portland? And the states that I've come to before, I know that, like, when developments went in, there were certain costs that developers paid towards the school systems, you know, to help with the impact. And I don't see that happening here. So why isn't it that, I mean, I guess all the questions we're asking, so where the development is going, how do we figure out what the capacity will be on our buildings, that some of which are already maxed out? But in other states, that's kind of figured into the planning with developers that, you know, you help pay the cost towards schools where you need them because of the families that you're bringing in with your development.
So that's a, that's a, that's a different, yeah, yeah, that, that's a different question for, than is addressed in these plans, as I said, we have.
Yeah, I realize that, but I'm just always kind of been curious as to.
Well, it's actually a statewide prohibition on including schools and systems development charges.
Right.
As necessary infrastructure. We have our construction excise tax, but it'll never build a school.
Yeah.
It's nominal.
So Director, yeah, that's what I was trying to say, is you, I do not know the answer to that in terms of tax policy and the different ways to pay for these infrastructures.
Yeah, it's terrible.
Yes, I agree.
So, so my, I guess my concern, looking ahead, is, is the flip side of all of this. It's the, it goes to your last slide, where depending on what kind of development we do, we're going to have either a whole bunch of kids, or we're going to have no kids. And I, I live in North Portland, and the development that's happening in the area where I live, it is not family friendly. I mean, it's, it's studio apartments, one-bedroom apartments, very expensive, and across the street from a middle school is a big complex of micro lofts, which I find both puzzling and disturbing. So, I mean, I worry about the flip side. I worry about the kind of development that's, that's going on. There may be pots of town where, where we're going to see declining enrollment in future years. You're going to have other pots of town where, you know, schools are going to be busting at the seams, and others where, you know, we're going to be trolling the streets for kids, because they're, they're not going to be in buildings.
I, I think that's, that's on all our minds. I really appreciate sort of PSU's predictions and the Bureau of Planning's presentation. It's timely, not by accident, because we're about to go into our own process for making our best predictions about how to best staff and think about these enrollment patterns. With the permission of the Chair, if I could ask Deputy Superintendent Hertz, and maybe with some backup support, talk a little bit about sort of how this informs our next steps and how we plan for next school year, because this is sort of our attempt to sort of bring information.
So, so I, I did have one more question for presenters, and for Joe, and this, this is probably.
Don't go away.
This is probably a bit of, of off-topic and maybe over, over a beverage discussion.
So.
It's good.
So, yeah. So nationally, sixty-three percent or something like that of households are owner occupied. Portland is, within Portland Public Schools, it's already in the low fifties, which is probably, I, I believe, similar to San Francisco's school district, Seattle as well, if you look at the inner-city school districts, which surprised me. And what we're zoning for is increasing that down to fifty percent, below fifty percent owner occupied. Why are we doing that?
Well, I, I don't think you can draw that conclusion, that the, in the, the single dwelling, the duplex, three-flat, four, fourplex model I was talking about, there's no reason those will, could not be owner occupied. There's no reason that even multi-dwelling, multi-unit apartment, what look like multi-unit apartment buildings are not owner occupied. It's just, it's different form of ownership. And it may not be a form of ownership, and, and it's, it's a little bit goes back to the part of the story of the full range, economic range of households where the rate, where the families are living in a long-term basis in a multi-dwelling building, that's new to us in, in, in Portland, in terms of a broad phenomenon, but it's not new up and down the rest of the West Coast. So I think the cost of housing and the desire to live in these great neighborhoods that we have is going to lead to a change in the format of these buildings, and that's not an overnight thing, and does not just assume that there'll be a loss of the opportunity to own where you live and have, until they change the tax codes, the wealth creation potential that that, that brings.
And it is an interesting moment of opportunity, like, our own Habitat for Humanity locally is starting to do multifamily. So ownership for lower income families and all the positive benefits that come with homeownership, including less mobility and all of that. So you're right, I mean, as the structure is changing, it's not necessarily just pricing people out. There are some strategies that are trying to use it to level the playing field as well.
Habitat for Humanity is building ten units on, these are multifamily lots, and they're building them in attached, they're attached unit buildings now, but they're for sale units, because their model is a for-sale unit model. We're going to see more of that. And it's not going to be as weird, and we're going to have the infrastructure that makes it like a typical thing you finance, and that's part of our future. It's not, and it's not at the expense of homeownership rates, and it's not at the expense of single-famliness, I think.
Yeah, I'd still, I'd be surprised if it, you know, those are going to go sixty, forty, and, and especially compared to all the other. And another question, again, I, I can let it go, is how much control does the city have over the actual type of multifamily housing that goes in?
Very little.
Okay, so there's really no guarantee that any of that coming in, Phil, is going to be family-friendly, you know, three-bedroom?
Well, you know, but, in developing that particular piece of code, we worked closely with the home builders. And so the feedback that, and, and that's part of what you just saw in this last sort of spade of development of apartment buildings, especially the ones without parking, never could happen, no one's ever going to live there, oh, we can build that, make money, people will live there, and now the home builders and the developers are, are believers in that. They believe that they could build and sell all day these eighteen hundred, eight hundred square foot ownership units that are in neighborhoods, that are like duplex, three flats, because there's so much demand for it. And there's more demand for, and the ability to pay for that kind of housing than there is necessarily for the six thousand square foot single-family house, which could be the alternative in some of these neighborhoods. So it's, it's market-driven, and they, the market seems to think it's out there. So we just, we wanted to give it a run to see if we can incentivize that supply.
Yeah, the market, market is not our friend a lot of times, in terms of planning a city.
Before you leave, I just had a question about the, the City of Portland PowerPoint. Is it possible to get, so, of course, the City of Portland, we're one of only five districts within the City of Portland, I'm wondering if it's possible to get a further click-down on just the, I mean, it's great trend data from the whole city, but we know that PPS is not necessarily representative of the city, especially the school districts on the eastern edge, so I'm wondering if that's possible to get a, an either further refinement on the trends in Portland, but in Portland, that same data, but just our district.
Oh, I, I believe it is, yes, so let me go back and talk with folks.
That's great.
It should be, we should be able to do that, so, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Really fascinating, thank you. Mr. Zander?
It's great to have experts in the field come in to share their knowledge with us. And so what, what does this mean to us? Well, I think we've spoken earlier this year in the fall, and we told you that we're losing state school fund, and it's because our poverty and our ELO, students are going down, so our extra waiting that we receive for students. So that will impact both general fund as well as our title funds. So our, luckily in our title funds, we have some fund balance, and the instructional program staff are being really deliberate and smart about stair-stepping that down over time, so there isn't a, a quick drop in terms of schools. So we're, they're being very strategic in making, taking that drop over more period, a longer period of time rather than all at once. And so in terms of general fund, we don't have that same capacity. We have been building our fund balance, as you know, and we do have the new board policy that does also, that we're aspiring to get to that ten percent over a certain amount of time. So I don't know, Sean, if you have other demographic information you want to share with the board at this point?
Not particularly, I'd just say that Charles has also provided a one-year forecast for us, and we're in the process of working through what the, the staffing impacts will be. And, and, and then the, the same information's also been incorporated into how we're going to project revenue as well.
Right, and then of course we'll wait for first March fifteenth estimate from the state, which will be well before we know what's really happening in the legislature, but each step of the way we'll get closer and closer and refine our budget as we go.
Can, go ahead.
So this is a preliminary that we got from?
This is a preliminary that we got from Charles.
I'd say, he may make some revisions by March.
Okay.
He was talking specifically about kindergarten assumptions.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you give us a sense of how accurate the year-over-year projections are by school? Because I, I mean, I know historically that the district-wide enrollment projections have been pretty much spot-on. How does it compare when you get down to the school level?
I, I, it seems pretty close. When, I'd say kindergarten is always brand-new kids, that's always going to be the, the most challenging to project. And I would also say that, what Charles said is that he kind of tends to use a more conservative status quo approach, so something, so he didn't really factor in a whole lot of new kids coming in for, for Franklin. And, 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 but maybe we ourselves need to think about some of those modifying his forecast. If we want that on some of those.
Well, we now have a, we now have a track record to go on.
Yeah.
I mean, when was the last time we built a high school? So, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
And the data that we got in October was pretty right on, with the exception really being the west side, where it was projected to be pretty high enrollment growth, and we, wasn't really declined, but it stayed flat. So the, that was really where we saw the differential. But otherwise, it was pretty right on.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Which is, thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Which is remarkable at the school level.
Yeah.
Because there's, there's really no way to do that with any, people move.
Okay, thank you. So the next item is parks and recreation intergovernmental agreements for Grant Park easements.
Good luck studying there.
Oh, yes, good luck. Our student representative has to leave because he has a final tomorrow.
We're, we're expecting a report on the final, your finals grades.
Well, all the grading goes through here, so you'll, you'll not.
We don't have access to your synergy.
Oh, wow. Maybe that's a good.
Hi, good evening, I'm Sarah King, Director of Planning and Property Management. I want to talk to you about an easement before you. An easement is a, is a real estate document. It's not something that normally goes to the board. As you may know, easements are often small pieces of property, they're often something we grant for a particular purpose, say for another agency or utility, often others grant us easements. But this one is before us because of the size of the easement and frankly, the dollar value of the easement. We haven't done an actual appraisal on that, but we anticipate that it is of a significant amount, significant enough that we wanted to bring this to you and talk to you about this for your approval. Grant High School, this easement, let me just state that the reason for this easement is because of some city-imposed requirements on the district regarding the, in result of the remodel at Grant High School. Grant High School, as you know, is right next to Grant Park, we have a very close relationship with the Parks Bureau about uses on each other's property, and more than probably any of our other high schools, there's actually facilities that we have jointly on each other's property. Not atypical in an urban situation, but this is probably the most pronounced. So we've had a driveway, I think you're all aware of the driveway, that goes off thirty-sixth, northeast Thirty-Sixth Street. We've had a driveway there at Grant High School for many, many years. And there has been, uh, some of that driveway has been on city property. We've had a revocable permit from the city to use that property for drive, for driveway for many years. As part of the remodel, we have been required to put in storm management facilities next to that driveway, make that driveway wider to meet fire safety requirements, as well as put a turnaround there at the end of the driveway. And as you may know, at the end of that driveway, just to the north of that driveway, is Grant Pool, which is a facility owned by Parks and Recreation. So in the original driveway that we've had, uh, with the Parks Bureau all these years, it's been our driveway. We use it for school, but the Parks Bureau has used it in the summer for public access, both for the park and the pool. And I think it's worked well for years. In this new situation, because of the requirements that were imposed on us from the city, uh, we've had to make that driveway wider. We needed additional park property. And so the way, uh, Parks, and we worked it out, is we have a reciprocal, excuse me, we have a shared drive for both of our uses. They, we have, have granted the Parks Bureau an easement to use our property for access to the pool and the park. They have granted the same to us on their property. And as you've got in the back of your report, there's an illustration here. It shows you, it's roughly the same amount of property that we're each dedicating to this, what is becoming, or what has been in, in practice now in actuality, is sort of a joint, um, parking facility. So that's the purpose of this, this easement. It's pretty, it's pretty substantial size. And, uh, because of that, uh, we wanted to take this to the board for approval.
This is not really your, I'm sorry. This is not really your purview. It's more the office of school modernization. But do you know if there was any conversation around cost-sharing on the improvements themselves?
Uh, I do not know for sure, but I would imagine just, uh, that A, it's our project. This is how it's been in our relationship with Parks. If it's our project, we're initiating it, and there are certain infrastructure that we need to put in place to meet those requirements for that, we paid for it.
Even if they're deriving long-term benefit from it?
Yes, yes, yes. And what's interesting about this is we needed that property to meet our city-imposed requirements. So to some degree, I know, it's one part of the city versus another, uh, it's the system we have. You know, it put Parks in the driver's seat, honestly. We needed their permission, and they did not offer to pay, nor would they probably have agreed to it even if we asked them.
Did we ask them? So the answer is we didn't ask them?
Uh, I do not know if we've asked them specifically. I can, I know what the answer would have been, because we've had these conversations on other things.
It's always good to ask.
It is always good to ask. If we've had a specific conversation about the parking, I don't know offhand. We have had other conversations at Grant about other improvements, and they have gone the way that, that Sarah just explained. If we're the one who is instigating the improvement, uh, and then we are effectively the one who will be paying for that improvement, we, we apply for the, the, the improvement, and then, uh, we pay for it as well.
Even if it benefits them. We did ask about maintenance, whether they were willing to share the maintenance, and they said no. So right now, we've committed to, for fifteen years, doing the maintenance now.
Completely one-way, um, you know, soccer field, um, they, they get to, they get to rent it out and keep all the rental.
We're looking for a paradigm shift.
Yeah. Yes, I agree.
We're not looking for you to pull one out of your pocket right now.
Yeah, it's a long and complicated, long and complicated, uh, history there.
So I have just a question about, um, the background memo that was provided. So it says that it will grant PPS non-exclusive access and parking rights on the portion of the parking lot built on the Grant Park land. In exchange for the expanded use of the land, PPR requires PPS to grant the city the same non-exclusive access on the portion of the parking lot built on the PPS property. So during the school day, do we have exclusive access to the parking lot, or?
No, we don't.
I'm trying to understand what this means.
Yeah, we don't, we don't. Although in practicality, and it's been like this actually in practice for, for years, don't anticipate to change. In practicality, is our staff is using that parking lot well before the public does in the morning. So to my knowledge, and we have had some discussions with, with people that have been here, uh, longer than I have, we have not had any of those issues. Now, we could have some issues down the road in the summer if we chose to have, say, evening classes, evening classes at Grant High School. In the summer, that might conflict with pool use, for example. So we might see some conflicts there.
If we did an evening scholars program.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Any other questions?
So what do we, what does PPS get out of this agreement?
We get the, we meet our requirements imposed by the city for developing, developing the new school.
We get our essential permits.
Correct. We get approval of the conditional use and the building permit for Grant High School.
So you brought it up because of the value of the property.
Yes.
Is, is this per se costing us any money?
The maintenance.
To enter into this agreement?
No, nominal amount of money. No, no money is changing hands.
Okay.
So do both parties have to agree to it?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So have they already agreed to this?
No, this will go, well, it doesn't have to go, it just goes to the, uh, oh, has, has they agreed? Yes, they have agreed to it.
They've agreed to it.
Have they formally agreed to it? No, and it will not. It does not need to go to the city council.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it, it
So it is a negotiated agreement.
But they don't have to, we, the board needs to approve it, but under their rules, they don't.
That's correct.
It doesn't meet their requirements, okay.
So, so you're responding to board policies?
Yes, that's correct.
These twelve by five hundred feet, approximately, that's about three dozen parking spots that our staff and others will probably have use of the majority of the time.
Yes, yes. It's, yeah, and I actually, I can't remember with all the new requirements. I think it's a net increase of parking, but I can't say that for sure.
It is a net increase from the standpoint of legal spaces, I do believe. I think there's some parking going on there that's not totally legal in the past. So I think of total spaces net, it is an increase.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
So is this gonna, yeah, I'm sorry, I have a question about it. So this is gonna come to us at the meeting on the twenty-ninth?
Probably, um, with, with the way we typically do these is we would ask, since, since we've discussed this, we would send this over to the Parks Bureau. The Parks Bureau would sign it, and then it would come to you. And I don't know if we can get that back from the Parks Bureau in time to get it on the agenda for the twenty-ninth. Cause I believe documents are due very soon.
So the only thing I would ask, just is, is it just a standard practice that we have the result? If we're gonna be going to have the resolution, the draft resolution attached?
We have one drafted.
It'd be great to see it.
I'm sorry?
It'd be great to see it.
Yes, yeah.
Ms. King, thank you so much for bringing this forward. I really appreciate this. And given that these have the capacity to limit our use of the property going forward, that frankly, they always make me break out in a rash. And I, I, I appreciate all of the information you've brought, and the map, which is terrific. I did just wanna ask about the dog leg at the western end. Can you foresee, oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me.
Oh, no, big pardon. Can you foresee any circumstances when we would need to build on that property? Actually, for, for both of you.
My response would be, it is so close to the Parks property line that I don't see that happening unless we were to jointly build something with the Parks Bureau that encroached much more heavily into the Parks Bureau property.
Which would make the, the issue academic then.
Isn't that a required fire lane?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I don't
But you could replace, I mean, if we, we could build over this if we replaced it, you know, it's
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, this, this is to allow fire truck access to the back of Grant, and was required by code. So I don't get why, at a minimum, we don't get exclusive use during the day and just pre- prevent any kind of issues downstream. It seems like a pretty small thing to ask, and why not just nail that down?
I, I actually think, well, it may benefit us to be very flexible if we ask for exclusive use at certain times. Is Parks gonna ask for exclusive use for times? I think we have more to lose from exclusive use post or signage than Parks does. Is that making sense?
Well, well, yeah, but only if, only if we view this as a competition and not a cooperation.
Well, and that's
And that's, that's speaking of the paradigm change. I mean,
I, I actually think from a, if, in the spirit of cooperation, that we work together without signage. I, I think it's more workable without signage or without exclusive use during certain hours, quite honestly. Our thought going into this is that we would see how this goes, and if we have a problem, then we will talk to them about it.
Is that gonna be written into the agreement?
Um, it probably would not, well, I would have to go back and look at the actual easement language, which I don't have right in front of me. Um, there's two places it could go. It could go in easement language. It could also go in our collaborative agreement, which is an agreement we have with the Parks Bureau, which we're going to be amending here in the next year. And that is, so it could go either place, and we can, we can state something like that.
Will the addition of lights at the Grant Bowl potentially have an impact on that? And the reason I ask is, I talked to Commissioner Fish, Fish the other day, and this is something that they're wanting to work with the school district on. But I could see, um, there being both increased usage, um, by the district, um, and this, since, um, there's not enough field time there anyway, but also, um, potentially increased use by the city. And I'm just wondering whether we should, before we get ourselves locked in, think about how we would wanna, um, if there's additional usage and therefore more people parking, or additional parking later into the night, how we wanna handle that versus, just as an unknown.
Yeah, I think that's a good, it's a good question. Um, I, on the one hand, our folks, yeah, there'll be some additional evening use by the school district, probably just thinking conceptually during the week. And that's, from what I understand, generally, probably not, I, I, I don't get the feeling that this is really parked up in the evening during the school year, at least by park users. It would probably remain parked for school use. I think the bigger question is, in general, if we have more activity in the bowl, not just here, but in the whole area, how are we gonna accommodate parking? And that will be an important part of the conditional use permit that will be required for us to put lights or any other, um, improvements into Grant Bowl. I think when Grants, when the Park Bureau would be using this parking is during the summer for pool use, I don't know if we would be using the lights at the bowl for school use as much in the summer. That's yet to be determined, and we haven't started to negotiate that. So I guess another question for you is, this easement needs to be recorded as part of our, before we get a building permit in Grant. And, um, we're, I don't know when we're gonna be entering in the conversation, the bigger conversation around Grant Bowl. So I don't know if we'll have an answer specifically around how we're gonna park any improvements in Grant Bowl in any immediate timeframe.
Well, I think we shouldn't lock ourselves in for fifteen years without contemplating that. I mean, I can't imagine the city's not gonna give us the occupancy permit for the high school because we are trying to work something out on that parking. It seems like we could think of something prospective that takes into account that there could be increased usage. Cause it seems like there's increased usage at night for the neighborhoods. I'm sure they'd much rather have, um, if there's students driving, parking, they'd rather have parking in the parking lot than out on the neighborhood streets.
Yeah, I think that we're gonna, as I said, we're gonna have to, well, we're, we'll have to deal with those questions because they'll come up from the community as we discuss the bowl improvements. We'll have to address it during conditional use permit. And then I, I think as we get into discussions of the bowl, and when we use those improvements, and when the Parks Bureau uses those improvements, we need to throw this in that negotiation as well.
I mean, most of August, the fields are used just because the start of Daily Devils.
Pardon?
I said, in Aug, most of August, those, any high school field is pretty much fully, yeah, I mean, it'll be utilized pretty much all day and most of the evening, if it can, in August.
Okay, so I think, um, I think what you're hearing in general is that, board members would like us to be more assertive in negotiations with the city. Then, then I think we have tended to be in the past, so.
But to be fair, that's a comprehensive goal, and some of that is on us at the governance level. We're not just saying, Sarah and Dan, go work your magic.
Yeah, 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 so, um, yeah. The goal is paradigm shift, so. Okay, so, um, any other questions? Okay, so you'll come back to us with, um, with a resolution sometime soon?
Yes, as soon as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a resolution reflecting the memo? Or potentially reflecting some of the things we discussed tonight? Just a question.
I don't know the answer to that.
You'll try.
I, I think we heard a lot of other considerations that we should try to aim for. I think this is gonna result in some follow-ups, and some of that could be incorporated, assuming there's cooperation. Then we'll do that.
Absolutely.
Okay, right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, next up.
Chair Moore, do you mind if I give a little bit of an intro?
Oh, please.
So for us newbies, uh, or those new to Portland Public Schools storied history of a lot of past community engagement efforts, at the encouragement of a lot of individual board members and conversations with me and senior staff around, it'll be really invaluable to gain a deep understanding of a lot of past initiatives and efforts and how those played out with the community and stakeholders. And it's important to sort of understand that. So we, we went about commissioning, uh, what we've dubbed the Trombley Report. The packet this week was a little heavier than most. Our cabinet got a high-level preview, um, which we all appreciated the, um, the hyperlinks and providing us a map of all these artifacts that you're gonna hear about. But, uh, would love to invite Jason Trombley up, familiar to, I think, everyone, who was able to tie in his unique history in many of these initiatives. So was able to bring that perspective in as well, so, the Trombley Report.
Good evening, Chair Moore, members of the board, and Superintendent Guerrero. I think, given the time, I'm gonna give some very brief remarks, and then open up the, um, rest of the time for board question and comment, cause you all got the report, I think, late last week, both the full as well as the appendices. So first, for me, the biggest context after doing all of this work are three things, I think, for me personally. Um, one, as you'll see on the cover page of the report, is a quote from a parent that testified during the D-BRAC process in two thousand and fifteen. Um, that was a quote from, I think, that stood through the entire enrollment balancing process. And I think for me is a signal that through all of the eighteen years of systemic change, that communities time and time again stood up to both share their perspectives, but also defend what communities school, and I thought it was one that just stood home for me time and time again. Second is the timeframe in which I was directed to take a look at, and that timeframe is important for me in two reasons. One, 2001 happened to be my senior year in high school, so as a student. So for me, this, doing this research was a very humbling exercise to really get a sense of basically what occurred after I graduated. And number two, but I think what is the most important part in this, if our work, both as, as everyone who wears the badge, whether you're elected, contractor, employee, is to put this work student-centered. And knowing that going into 2019, and that the start of this work started and looked back to 2001, that if we're going to put this student-centered, that it's important to acknowledge that this whole time period really occurred for the graduate, the coming graduating class of 2019. So that is Nick Pazler's entire graduating cohort from birth to now. So what this report really does in full context is the entire PPS experience of this graduating class since they were born. So to really think about all of the change, systemic, but also imposed by state and federal mandates, it's important to acknowledge that with even all that change, communities stood up time and time again, and even with the graduation outcomes that we'll hopefully have, the bonds we've passed, the investments that communities have given, we stood up and tried to fight back despite all of the things that were imposed on the system. So I want to cover a few highlights for you that I think are worth noting. From the period of 2000 to 2007, this district, aside from the Multnomah County, you know, temporary income tax that a number of you advocated for, despite all of that, the district faced a hundred and forty-eight-plus million-dollar shortfall over seven years. At that same time, the district from 2000 to 2007 also experienced an enrollment decline of 8,000-plus students in seven years. You were also facing the full impact of No Child Left Behind, which targeted a number of schools based on test scores were low performing, and based on that outcome and recommendation, communities were faced with an enrollment balancing process by board resolution to either talk about enrollment relief, options to figure out long-term solutions. Some communities got an effort to envision future building designs themselves, but in some communities were also forced to, what I call, you know, basically forced to the precursor of the Hunger Games, asked to assess what schools should close. That communities were asked to say what schools should close. And when looking at board resolutions, that it identifies which community got what impact, directed from the top down. All of that occurred before 2007. Going into that, two other things I think long-term are really important, or actually a few things. Heading into that first school year of 2007, eight, over 40 resolutions authorized by the board from 2005 to 2007 directed that level of system change. Additionally, what's also important here is to note that at that time period, we're also trying to figure out long-term funding solutions, or at least stopgap measures, to try to minimize that impact. And so for me, one lesson learned in this, this is the importance of what was called the local option levy that started in 2001. And looking at those local option levies from that 18-year time period, coming into this school year, this city, through Multnomah County, Washington, and Clackamas Counties, the amount that we actually received was over $690 million. That is greater than the operating budget for this district this school year. So it's community members, over and over, despite the change, despite the dysfunction that communities claim that were imposed from the state and the city and the county, communities invested $690 million to us to try to minimize that gap, in spite of everything. And additionally, with your modernization bonds, that has offered an additional $1 billion-plus in investment in our schools. So to me, that says something that despite all of the change, everything that has been reported, communities have stepped up to try and preserve what we want to hope to offer for all of our kids. The report, I hope, also acknowledges that even with that promise, communities were impacted differently. You made a promise, but that promise was not either equally or equitably delivered. For example, in the case of the Jefferson Cluster, over a 10-year period, that high school alone experienced seven different types of configuration changes. Sometimes, on an average of one to two years, you made a new change. It's no wonder that in 2013, the Jefferson Cluster community rightly pushed us to stop experimenting on that community and focused us to look at both system-wide and look at, look at all those changes through racial equity impact. And that was my first real engagement in the system, and I have to say it over and over again, that after the SAC and boundary process, I have to acknowledge what that community did. After all of that change, they still stood up and fought back. And so for this work, I have to show my appreciation and gratitude towards them. So it's important to acknowledge that even with all that change, communities wanted to build. And I think with this context now going into the visioning process, that is, this is your prime opportunity to not only reset what that vision is, but it's everyone who wears the badge that has an obligation. And that obligation is that you are building a new contract with families and children for the next generation, and that contract, it has to be one that the system can both deliver on its promise, regardless of who is or who is not superintendent, who is or who is not in leadership, and who is or who is not on the board. That has to outlive everybody, because it's clear through this work, superintendents changed four times. There were multiple board changes, but all of these impacts were compounded. So part of that work in the next stretch has to be defined what that relationship is, and has to really come to clear grips as about what you all are willing to deliver and hold accountable that the system will deliver for our kids. And part of that is, as you're taking on a lot of responsibilities and priorities, you have to be willing to identify what it is you're trying to achieve, and what you're going to deliver, and how it actually shows up for students. Because you make, you can make, at least from my research, you can make a very large resolution. It's long and detailed and thorough, but if students don't experience what you've defined on paper, that paper doesn't mean anything. So I think the other thing I'd want to acknowledge that in all of this work, particularly in the last few processes that I personally participated in as chair, they were really personal learning opportunities for me, and in particularly the boundary process itself. It showed that you can bring multiple stakeholders together, even those who have a history of battling each other. You can still find common ground and move forward. So for example, and I actually want to acknowledge some individuals from that commission, one being Joe Zender, who testified before, as well as Jane Leo, and as well as Matthew Schaubold from the Housing Bureau, who, and learning about enrollment balancing and how housing and stability, you know, really plays a role in, to ensure that our children access the opportunities we say we value for our children, to really build that regional conversation and that language around how do you actually align your work regionally. Because what you do here in Portland Public impacts David Douglas, Reynolds, Gresham, et cetera, and vice versa. And so we had started researching different ways on how to actually deal with that, and I was also appreciative that in his final year in office, Mayor Charlie Hales, and particularly his policy advisor, who really actually wanted to figure out how do you actually do this on a systems level. I also had the good fortune to talk with a few superintendents outside of the state on their lessons learned, particularly Stephen Merly from the Iowa City Community School District, who used, who in concert with his board, used their racial educational equity policy to convene a regional conversation with planners and developers to figure out how to plan for it long-term, because their growth experience in Iowa City was negatively impacting their students of color, as well as their immigrant families. Both him, as well as his, their board members, particularly Brian Kerschling, were really open about multiple phone conversations with me about how they did it, and made their documents and board presentations available. And I know Stephen has always wanted the chance to come back to visit Portland, so I hope you'll use him as a resource. It is a smaller district, but they dealt with similar issues that we did, so I'd know he'd love the opportunity to at least have a conversation. From a learning perspective as well, I learned also that there were a number of, you know, companies in San Francisco, for example, and in the, in the Bay Area, that recognized that with, you know, enrollment growth and their ability to actually recruit employees, that they were causing issues around housing affordability. So for example, Facebook had committed in 2016 a $20 million grant for housing assistance, the construction of affordable housing units, to both Palo Alto as, in Menlo Park as well. So I think there are opportunities to engage your regional partners, to figure all of the real systems, to ensure that what you want for your children, children actually deliver on it. And finally, from a personal, I think, running the boundary process was a very difficult one, to say the least. But I think for me, it wasn't so much about how do I help the system do better. It was the fact that I was also serving as a coach of the Constitution team at the same time. And one of the first things that came to mind, knowing my lesson learned from running the enrollment and transfer process in 14, 15, was how to actually ensure to keep my kids safe, my students safe, every single day. Because I was nervous that parents, even with the changes, proposed changes, were likely to protest me on school grounds. That I was nervous because as a person of color, that I was really willing to make some bold statements, that there would be a negative impact to the students who signed an agreement and enrolled in my program. So from the top down, I think the first person I really want to thank is Mayor Charlie Hales' wife, Nancy, who offered that if I needed personal security detail for me or my students, that she would make it available to me personally. Looking at the central office level, starting off with George Weatherroy, who told me that when we're getting into the heat of community processes, said, "If you need a badge, let me know," because he would walk me through, in multiple cases, the different ways to get the commission or my committee into rooms safe in case there were protesters on site, or in cases where I was in a number of community meetings where testimony might be heated, the quickest way to get students out of those rooms so that they were safe. Additionally, I also want to acknowledge the entire Communications Department during that time period, who made sure that that process was transparent, but also let me know if there are any comments directed towards me or my students, so that we could respond to it very quickly and expediently. Additionally, in particular, I also wanted to note John Isakes and Judy Burning, who helped build that infrastructure for me. And at a local level, I want to thank Lincoln Principal Peyton Chapman, her vice principals then, Alfredo Quintero, and Sean Mailey, who actually built a school-level infrastructure for me, particularly that I would check in with them every Tuesday after school, and that if they, and that one administrator would be onsite, as well as campus monitors, just in case someone showed up to protest me when I was teaching. As well as the campus monitors, Frank Acosta, Stan Caples, as well as Edward Sims, who were both campus monitors during the entire boundary process at school, but also well as at my community meetings. And they were on multiple occasions for security, you know, at both meetings for me in particular. I didn't really think that in serving our students, particularly in a public capacity, that I would have to do something like that. But personally, I guess, when you're really trying to tackle racial equity, you have to ensure that your students are safe. And knowing that going into this, I, for me, that is what I had to do. Aside from that, one of the things that I learned over and over is that there were so many community members that I met over years, who showed up time and time again, regardless of how tough or how uncomfortable conversations got. We always tried to find ways to move forward. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, with the last official time that I'll have on record about these processes, that those individuals that I've named deserve the acknowledgement with regard to ensuring either helping me learn along the way, or ensuring that my students were safe the entire time. So I just wanted to make sure that that got stated for the record. So with that, I know you all have gotten the presentation. Like I said, I wanted to keep it brief to open it up for questions. So for that, Chair Moore and the members of the Board, I yield to you for questions.
Questions? I know, it's, I mean, I got to say, this is like walking down memory lane. Most of it, not pleasant memories, I have to say. So thank you for documenting all this. If you had to, so this is, this is what I affectionately call the Process Paloozes we've all lived through. If you had to kind of come up with three takeaway lessons from all of this, what would they be?
The first is, every process you initiate has to align with the vision you want for your system, and has to be very clearly defined in terms of what you're trying to achieve by it. And what I mean by that is, how does this process actually help achieve the goals you've defined for your system? If you can't define that, then your community can't understand it, and communities don't, won't have a chance to understand how they can be empowered as builders to help achieve it too. Because what I learned first and foremost is, communities have tried to build things for so long in this district, despite, you know, all of the changing environments. If you set a vision and say, "Here's what I think the system can achieve," how can you help us get there faster? Two is, I think, don't underestimate the power of what students can do. The benefit of the D-BRAC Commission in particular is that we had student reps on it from the very start, and they were very open about what they really thought. I think back to example Max Tuttle, who was in the first years, and he said, I think one of the summary statements he had shared with us was, "Okay, you can change the boundary between Grant and Madison, but it's not going to make a difference because parents are going to find a way to falsify an address to get their kids into Grant." And they were a number of his peers, and people who lived right across the street from him. So for me, this is why in one of my recommendations, never underestimate that students understand the depth of the inequities that have been created over 20 years, and they understand them much more nuance-ly, and will get them a lot faster than the adults. So I think the first part is really engage them and empower them to be candid, but a path to say, "How do you solve it?" The second part of it is, don't let a process run forever. It has to have a clear start and end date. For a student perspective, I would say, when I met with students from Apano's Youth Leadership Group, as well as students in a leadership class, they wanted to know when the boundary, boundary maps were going to be approved, because they asked flat out, "If my sibling is going to be impacted, let me know, because I want to help them know that while this change may be uncomfortable, that you'll still have the same access to opportunity at that school as the one that I have." So students who want to help their older and younger siblings, give them the time to do it. And three is, don't do a lot of processes at once. And four is, if you're going to do a process and look at bold change, and this was the, one of the fundamental elements in the boundary process that I think is a response to 2006, only vote for what you know you can ensure the system delivers. Money, staffing, HR, the full gamut. That all should be in place, but well before you vote, so you can have time to scrutinize the numbers. So if you're going to conduct an enrollment balancing process this fall, ensure you have enough time to align it with your budget process, to ensure that you've ensured everything is in place. Otherwise, the values you've cited that are important, you have yet again not delivered on a promise to communities, especially based on this report, have shown who've gone through 18 years of change, especially communities who've had a number of changes imposed on them, even without having the opportunity to weigh in on it from the start. So I know that's a bit more than three, but that's the best guidance I can offer in response to your question.
So I'm going to just offer some context since, while Nick may have been just born at the time of this report, I was actually on the Board. And, you know, reading through the first part of it, it was a time when, when I got on the Board, we had an ending fund balance of $200,000, not whatever's five to six percent, so $200,000, and then we went into, immediately went into a recession, where we had five special sessions of legislature-
Please wait, you're sweating.
$200,000. And we also, what, the other piece of context I think that's important to note is, the baby boom had moved through PPS, where we had, when I went, was in PPS, there were 70,000 students, and 14 high schools that were all fairly good-sized, and, except for the one I went to, which later closed, but good size. And by the time I got on the Board, we were at less than, down in the mid-40s. And so you had the infrastructure and the footprint that had handled 70,000 students, that now had 45. And we had some elementary schools that had 100 to 200 students in them. And it was just, there was no way we could sustain, you had some schools that have a half-pine principle, because we couldn't justify a full-time staff person, just given the, just the reduction in the budget we had. So there was a lot of really hard, and I, I actually, I wouldn't describe it at all as the Hunger Games. It was the worst possible thing to have to go through as a board member. I mean, I think way worse than boundary changes, because you were closing something that was really close to people.
Yep.
So it's worse than the Hunger Games?
No, it was, it was worse than boundary changes, but I wouldn't describe it at all as the Hunger Games. It was a very thoughtful process, but it, yeah, nobody wants their school to close. I went to a high school my senior year that was consolidated with another high school, and some of the schools, I think there was a, you know, a thoughtful process that we went through to close the, to close the schools. There were, in the, in the middle of the baby boom, a whole bunch of schools that were built that were called overflow schools. There were essentially one hallways with just classrooms on either side, and a multipurpose room. And those are the ones that were, got closed the first, because they had the lowest number of students, and we weren't actually able to provide a very enriched program. I think you actually missed two of the schools we closed, just for what's worth.
I think it was Youngson and- I think it was Youngson and.
Youngson went into Bridger, and then Wilcox went to Vestal.
Yep.
But I think it's important to understand, the process by which we went through it, and I do think it was a thought, it was certainly hard, but it was a thoughtful process. I think the other thing, looking through this and thinking about change, that's important context for PPS, and I think it was a little bit of how we don't necessarily control external forces, is it was the time right in the middle of No Child Left Behind, and Marshall Roosevelt, Jefferson, were going through the sort of, the years of escalating consequences. So first, their students got the right to transfer, so they, any school that had openings, and of course Benson was all completely open enrollment, so they could all go there. So not only did they have the right to transfer out of those three schools, but then they also, the district was required to provide them with transportation, based on No Child Left Behind. And then as you got into the escalating years of No Child Left Behind, the threat of what we called the nuclear option was a reconstitution. Of course, Jefferson had already had that in the late 90s. So one of the sort of reconfigurations was essentially to make them to smaller schools. That's when those three schools went to smaller schools, because essentially, it got them a new school number, which meant the clock started over again, which really avoided, I think the options were reconstitution, a state takeover, or a charter school.
Or reconfiguration, which was one of the reasons the whole K-8 thing came out, is because a number of those schools, the clock was ticking. That's certainly why Kellogg was closed. They just pulled the plug on Kellogg. It had a, because of transfers out, had a pretty low enrollment, and they just said, done.
Yeah, and so unfortunately, No Child Left Behind is gone, or the bad parts of it, but part of that was a real desire of the school community not to have their school taken over by the state, or reconstituted, which had happened at both Jefferson and Humboldt, and had been very disruptive to the school community. So I think there's some lessons to be learned from all of that. Fortunately, we don't have $200,000 in our ending fund balance anymore.
But we have more than $200,000.
Well, we have, we have more than $200,000, but there wasn't any latitude. So I think as we look at sort of how we move ahead, I do think there's some important lessons to be learned, and also some understanding of what, some things that we don't control, and how we work through that in a way that still keeps us focused on our students.
Chair Moore, if I may offer one additional comment, in addition to a lesson learned, at least from my observation, is, I think, to your comment and Director Baylor's comment in particular, about like, it's like you're reliving a not-so-comfortable history. I think the part of it is, the community, the communities and parents have lived through all of this, and I think a lot of these processes that a person still live very deeply. I think especially with all of you, having gone through, I think, different parts of it in person, whether it's on the board or as parents. And I think part of this, and this is for me just a guess, with this visioning process, you have an opportunity to really set like what the new kind of expectation and contract is. But I think part of that is also embedded in the system, being able to fully acknowledge what has happened, but also, I think, from a personal perspective, giving community or allowing communities the chance to say, that happened. Do I, am I personally willing to give the permission to try to trust the system again, given the whole history? And knowing how complex and uncomfortable and tough a lot of those processes, or at least from my limited scope, I think everyone who's lived through it, or has learned through it, I think especially all of you, have a chance to model, how do you push forward into that next chapter for Portland Public? Because you all lived through this history yourselves in different forms, that if, I think you all especially can model, how do we do that? That might especially show communities who lived through it in different forms. If this board is willing to try to do that, as a community member, I'd like to give, try that too. So part of that, as you're going through the visioning process and doing your learning journeys and learning from what communities are valuing, keep that in the back of your thinking, okay, am I really, really willing, as a board member, willing to say, here's the new standard, here's that new contract of expectations for everyone who wears the badge, to ensure that our students access the opportunities communities have, through this process have said they value? And if you can do that, I think that really resets the roadmap for how we move forward.
So, a couple of takeaways I took from this. So combining the two present, two big presentations we had tonight, one on enrollment and population trends, and the other, this, your report, quite a bit of which revolves around enrollment. Not exclusively, but a lot of it. I think my takeaway, among other things, is, I mean, we've got, we've got this long-term trend on enrollment, where we get, you know, we started off way up here, and then we plummeted. And as soon as we started to react to the decline in enrollment, we actually were already on the upswing. And some of the actions we took at that low point, or what we thought was a low point, actually, we didn't think it was a low point. We thought it was a point on a continuing process of decline. Some of the actions we took were short-sighted. I mean, there was some, there were some operational issues that we had to deal with, but, but I think some of the responses didn't, didn't leave us enough flexibility to deal with the, a changing future. So, just as a, for instance, you know, a 30-year lease on Kenton. At the time, it made sense, but, you know, four years later, oh my God.
99-year lease, Multnomah County.
Yeah, I mean, it's, so, so we've made, based on, you know, a short, an analysis of what turned out to be a short-term trend, we made very long-term decisions that we have come to regret. I deeply regret the, the sale of Washington High School. I, I deeply regret that. And, and there were some other, some other choices that we made. So I, I mean, for me, as a board member, I think, I keep trying to remind myself, whatever we're trying to do today, we have to keep in mind 20 years down the road, or minimum five years down the road. And, and these, these enrollment projections, you know, we could go up, we could go down. And we need to have enough flexibility to respond to whatever happens. Because I don't think we have any idea what's going to happen in terms of enrollment, five, 10 years from now. You know, we could be busting at the seams everywhere. We could be, you know, searching for property to, to open a new school. Or we could be looking at schools that, you know, where are the children? So whatever we end up doing, that's sort of my takeaway from a lot of this.
I don't have any questions, if I could, but I just want to say, as a newbie, that I don't have this history. It's just really amazing to have a place to go back to and understand the context of, how did we get here? You know, what are things I, I've heard in the community, and just the amount of work that went into it. So I just want to thank you. And thank you for having the foresight to commission it, it's really helpful, it's really great.
I think I can say, with his few months here in residency, we had a whole nother group of people here for a year, I'm not so sure their report was as informative as what I have for nightstand reading now. Thank you.
Go ahead, keep reading, digest.
Thank you very much, Jason, I really appreciate this. I would have one comment, for the board as a whole. One of the things that leaps out of this to me, at least, is that the board really has to be aggressively asking questions about issues, particularly issues that come up around austerity. When we are short of funds, are we going to be making decisions that actually free up funds? And from my personal experience, the district closed Humboldt School because it was short of money. And it seemed to be accepted just as a matter of faith, that closing a school would save money. The most that Portland Public has ever saved in a year from closing Humboldt is $60,000. And in order to reconfigure the Boise Elliott Building, so that you could get the Humboldt students into it, the district had to invest $600,000 that summer. And of course, that's now less than 10 years later, and we've again reconfigured Boise Elliott, because we've opened Harriet Tubman. We, as a board, have to be understanding what we're voting on, and we have to be aggressively questioning received wisdom. And I think that your report really helps to make that case, so I am grateful, thank
Yeah, there were a number of these processes where, at times, district staff did not act with integrity. I was on a district-wide committee that looked at, gee, do we have too many schools? How much are we going to save by closing a school? And district staff came up with an estimate of, well, the principal. There's trade-offs around, trades, trade-offs around transportation costs, you still have to maintain a building if you're not in it, well, I guess you don't, Kellogg. But, but it wasn't much over $100,000. And three years later, when we're in a school closing process, millions were going to be saved, and the existing schools were going to have so much more in extras, you know, arts and PE and teacher planning time were promised, which never, I mean, that's just one example, I think, and the Backroom deal around the Rose City Park Triangle, there were just too many of those cases where public trust was violated.
So I'm gonna just offer like one last observation, and this goes back from being a student in PPS, all the way through a lot of the decisions that were made, at least while I was on the board beforehand. And, as I said, I went to Glencoe, and then I went to Washington High School, and it was a school of declining enrollment, that had about 800 students at the time, somewhat similar to Roosevelt now. And then they merged it with another declining enrollment school, which was Monroe, which was at the time Girls Polytech, which was the, the pair to Benson Polytech, and ultimately closed it, and then they closed Adams, which was, Adams, which was another low enrollment school. But if I look at sort of the pattern across the district, one commonality with many of those schools is, they were low-performing schools, often serving historically underserved students. And the district, it, you couldn't change the boundaries, so they, you know, the attempt to increase boundaries, to increase enrollment, that did not move the dial, because people still had choice within the system, some families, or a lot of families still had that. And so, you know, I think it's really going to be important for us to look deeper, because we can move the boundaries, but if we don't change the quality of what's happening in the schools, I don't, I don't think you're going, we're going to get the outcome we want, or the vision, that you can't just change the boundaries, and therefore we're going to have larger, larger schools. And I think this is why I continue to be concerned that we have these under-enrolled K-8s, because they're just, it's very hard to reverse, reverse those trends. And you can't, we could redraw the boundaries and think that we're actually looking at a, a piece of paper, that we've increased the, potentially increased the numbers, and therefore going to increase the, the quality of the program, but that's ultimately, I don't think what's going to change things. It's going to be what's happening in the classroom that's going to drive families and, to stay in a, in a school and keep them there. And so I think it's, it's tempting to try and look at boundaries, changes as the biggest lever we have, which I think the biggest lever we have is school quality. And I hope we keep that in mind, and not sort of look at the boundary changes the holy grail, because it's one lever, but not the most important one.
Well, I'm very happy to hear that. I think that's the philosophy with which our team operates. It is about offering the highest quality educational program we can for our kids. There is, of course, an economy of scale that comes with school enrollment, but we shouldn't confuse size with quality of programming. So, the challenge for us is, how do we kind of work all these levers in tandem, to get it, to get at making sure every school that one of our students walks into is going to be guaranteed a, a certain level of operating?
But it does bring us back to our metrics, and whether we have metrics that tell the story of a quality school. And the Sback and Oaks have never done that. In fact, they've, you know, Julia, you said, you know, low-performing, low-income schools. Low income, certainly. Low quality? We don't know that. We don't. We don't have a measure of that. But that's the reputation you get, if you just look at test scores. And that, that drives reputation, it drives biases.
Well, that's a good preview to next week's work session, when we have a very school-focused agenda, and you're going to get to hear from our school supervisors about some of the work they've been supporting our leaders and communities with, and the way they think about what some of the conditions that need to be in place, and how those are important to defining a high-quality school. So, stay tuned for that conversation next week. You like how I set you up? Thank you, I really, you just, great volleyball.
So I wanted to, I mean, a couple of other things. You know, it's not new news, but, but it really, I, I think this report really highlights the importance of fidelity and implementation, like good, good analysis, good planning, making sure that you have the resources to, to, you know, whatever it is you say you're going to do, you've got to make sure that the resources are there upfront. And, and you've, you've got to have, we've got to have reliable data and be able to use it. And, I mean, I was, Mike and I were part of the Southeast facilitated conversation, and all kinds of promises were made, whew, you know? And, we did, it was quite the committee. Mostly because we said no, because what we discovered was that the data that were being used to make decisions were remarkably squishy. And I'm being a little kind. So I, I think it, I think it just reinforces the notion that we, we really need to, and we're doing it. So, I mean, it, it, it just sort of reminds me that it's, you know, it's about analysis and data, and, and a plan, and then fidelity to the plan, and, and thinking ahead all the time. The other thing, I sort of feel compelled to note, Julia mentioned it, but I'm The other thing, I sort of feel compelled to note, Julia mentioned it, but I'm going to sort of put a fine point on it. The instability of state school funding will kill us all. And we have no more stability in state funding now than we did in 2001. And we are one recession away from more catastrophe. Which is why we, we collectively desperately need major tax revenue reform. We need to have some stability in funding levels so that, so that we can avoid the, you know, the period, the kind of volatility that we've experienced. But even year to year, when, when we have, when we don't have, you know, big recession, we still don't have predictability from one year to the next. We still don't have the ability to, to do any, any planning on anything more, you know, for Lucky, it's a biennium. And sometimes, not even that. To, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to really turn this district around, we need to be able to make investments and know that they're going to, that we're going to be able to sustain them over some reasonable period of time so that we can see some impact. You know? Having to create programs and then let them die two years later is, A, making us all crazy, and B, it is not serving students. It is not a good use of taxpayer funds. It is a stupid way to do business. So, vote early, vote often. We need tax reform. Any other comments?
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, thank you. This was, okay, thank you. So I guess the last word of business is public comment. Do we have any? We do not. Okay, so, anything else for the go-to the order? Okay, we are adjourned.